Does your phone system allow you to record the conversation between our customer care and the customer?
Yes, sir. Every conversation is recorded.
If we've sort of missed the technology with the telephone system, of course I had an opportunity to use some of that technology.
And how efficient that is.
It would seem that when someone calls and of course that information is embedded in a computer. Is there an effort then to enhance that part of that telephone call to make it much? The information is readily available and able to speak to that company?
Yes, sir.
I've seen it work and I don't know how integrated the systems are in terms of computer announcing. But it would seem to me that it does work. Is it a process of updating computer programming, analysis, data, and that sort of thing to make that telephone call more efficient for that company?
So, Councilman DeValle, you, that, there's a long answer to that question.
We've been gone for months.
I apologize.
Maybe we need to reintroduce ourselves.
I'm so sorry.
Councilman DeValle, there's a long answer there, but, but we do want to use the information that we get from every telephone call to help refine the process.
I think what you're speaking to also is making sure we've got a robust call tree and options that are, and we do have those options. We are, every week, looking at those and making sure those are the right options so we can track the number of folks that are hitting two for a public works or three for a water bill or four for a, to report a pothole. We can track those and then refine that. So we are getting better information with the new telephone system. So those are process improvements that we are, we are trying to make. We openly admit that the call wait times are unacceptable now and we're working every day to try to get those down. And we've got some exciting changes moving forward that I think will help that. I wanted, I wanted y'all to understand too though, that as we talk about customer service, it's not just the call center. It's how every employee interacts with our customers on a daily basis. It's how we restore someone's yard if we've dug up to replace their meter or their service line and doing that in a timely manner, making sure we're tracking that. It's how, you know, it's just an interaction on the street with the customer. It's all about how we treat our customers and our citizens. So that really is our focus moving forward to be better at that. And it begins, yes, with that first interaction.
And sewer, and then Robert, of course, will fold in how that impacts our rates and what that may be. So look for that. Dana's going to talk about engineering and stormwater improvements that we're making, how we're progressing with our stormwater bond initiative and executing those projects, and really some interesting things that she's doing in the Department of Engineering that I think are really moving us forward. So let me start off with our reorganization. As you're aware, Ms. Wilson had the vision for Columbia Water and wanted us to implement that, and we did so in July of 2017. And so we reorganized with an emphasis on customer service, transparency, and accountability. And on the back of every one of our business cards, we carry this mission statement that we want to become the best in class. We want to provide excellent customer service in doing all these things that we do to maintain our daily operations and planning and moving forward. So that's our driving mission, and that dovetails really nicely with envisioned Columbia in providing high-quality municipal services. So that was developed with that in mind. We reorganized our structure. We split out engineering and utility operations. We've put an emphasis on customer care, our call center, and our field customer staff so we can be a little more responsive. We've developed a communications group and brought those out as a direct report because it's really important that our customers know the things that we're doing. And then a little over a year ago, we brought public works into the fold as well, and that synergy's working really well, particularly in terms of how we do restorations after we've made a street cut, something along those lines. So there seems to be a good synergy there. Let's talk a little bit about our outreach and our communication efforts. You know, we can be doing a phenomenal job, but if our customers don't know the things that we're doing, then perception becomes reality. So how we communicate the things that we're doing, what we're doing with the investment through rates that y'all and our citizens have entrusted us with are very important. So this is a little example, and I apologize for not mentioning it earlier. You do have a copy of the handouts in front of you, as well as a few other materials. But just some examples, we've launched a new Columbia Water website that links with the City of Columbia website. We've got a new newsletter, The Pipeline, that is both inward and external facing. You should have seen a copy of that, but there's a copy in front of you. We've got a new customer guide to help guide anybody that wants to become our customer to help guide them through that process. You've got a copy of that in your stack as well. So all these are new developments. We've been having quarterly drop-ins to try to educate our customers and answer their questions, and we've got some thoughts about how to retool that and make that even better. We're giving away water from our water monitors. You can see on your far right-hand side how we're providing water bottles, and folks can fill up cold water, and our good, clean, clear, great-tasting water at community events. So we're trying to get the word out there about... Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry. I was just thinking, because I thought about this. I've seen some cities who actually have them, not just at events, but out so that other citizens can fill up. Is there any thought about doing something that's a more permanent location longer?
We have not, Ms. Wilson, but a certain... Ms. Devine, I apologize. We have not thought about that, but it is a good thought, and we will talk about that amongst our staff, particularly during the summertime and what that might look like. Absolutely. So increased presence at local events and trying to do that, just to get our message out, what we're doing and moving forward. We're going to... We're really trying to... I'm not the guy to be talking about this, but we're trying to get our social media presence out there. I do know we're on Facebook, but we're tweeting now, or Instagram, and trying to do some things to get... Just to get the message of what we're doing and how we're investing the community out to our customers. This customer service focus that we talk about, we've really invested in a new facility for our customer care team. We've moved them across the street from Washington Square to 1401 Main. I encourage you, if you haven't visited our new call center, please come by. Let me know. We'll give you a tour. It really is a nice, working environment for our staff. We've got an updated phone system. Y'all know we've implemented a customer advocate team who's going out and providing a little more one-on-one attention for those very difficult, hard-to-figure-out, why is my bill so high issues. So we're trying to give a little personalized attention there. We're looking at key performance indicators and tracking some things that we haven't tracked before. I added that last bullet item. Everybody knows we're going to automated metering infrastructure, but we've got to live manually reading meters until those meters, the new infrastructure's in place. So we've really been working hard to reduce the skips and the estimated meters. We're not at 100%, but we're working really hard to get those numbers down so that we are giving our customers accurate reads. Yes, sir, Councilman Devall?
Clint, on your customer service, you gave us his handout, Customer Service at a Glance?
Yes, sir.
And in March, it talks about the number of phone calls answered in 10 minutes, 52%. In 30 minutes, 66%. If it takes 10 minutes to answer half of the phone calls, when it gets to us, it's been boosted up to, I waited an hour. These numbers, although I know you're working hard to improve them, we've got to do better than that.
Yes, sir. I 100% agree. Those are unacceptable, and we talk about those on a weekly basis. April looks a lot better than March did. Those are March's numbers, so that the average hold time is coming down. But those are absolutely unacceptable. We flex the staffing to try to reflect the peak call volume hours, make sure we've got enough staff answering the calls then. So we're working that situation, but until we started tracking that, all we had was anecdotal information, hey, I had to wait for an hour and a frustrated customer. We're tracking that now. We know every day how long the wait time is, what the average wait time is. We can go back and pull those records. So we absolutely know that is unacceptable, and we are going to do better.
Does your phone system allow you to record the conversation between our customer care and the customer?
Yes, sir. Every conversation is recorded. Yes, sir.
If we've sort of meshed the technology with the telephone system, and of course, I had an opportunity to use some of that technology...
Thank you. Yes, sir.
And how efficient that is. It would seem that when someone calls, and of course, that information is embedded in a computer system, is there an effort then to enhance that part of that telephone call to make it much... The information is readily available and able to speak to that company?
Yes, sir.
I've seen it work, and I don't know how integrated the systems are in terms of computer announcing, but it would seem to me that it does work. Is it a process of updating computer programming, analysis, data, and that sort of thing to make that telephone call more efficient for that company?
So, Councilman Devall, you... There's a long answer to that question, but the answer is...
We've been gone for months, so it's okay.
Sorry.
Maybe we need to reintroduce our system.
I'm so sorry.
I think they just forgot about it. We look like he's just...
Councilman, there's a long answer there, but we do want to use the information that we get from every telephone call to help refine the process. I think what you're speaking to also is making sure we've got a robust call tree and options that are... And we do have those options. We are, every week, looking at those and making sure those are the right options so we can track the number of folks that are hitting two for a public works, or three for a water bill, or four for a... To report a pothole. We can track those and then refine that. So we are getting better information with the new telephone system. So those are process improvements that we are trying to make. We openly admit that the call wait times are unacceptable now, and we're working every day to try to get those down, and we've got some exciting changes moving forward that I think will help that. I wanted y'all to understand, too, though, that as we talk about customer service, it's not just the call center. It's how every employee interacts with our customers on a daily basis. It's how we restore someone's yard if we've dug up to replace their meter or their service line and doing that in a timely manner, making sure we're tracking that. It's how, you know, just an interaction on the street with the customer. It's all about how we treat our customers and our citizens. So that really is our focus moving forward, to be better at that. And it begins, yes, with that first interaction from the call center, but it goes all the way through until that request is complete and circled back to our final interaction with the customer. So that's the way we're looking at that entire process. Using technology, you saw, Councilman Devall, the volume of telephone calls. Contrast that with the number of people that are sending emails or using the app. We want to migrate toward the use of technology to make that a little bit better. We can... The night shift can answer the emails and dispatch a lot easier than fielding calls at noon on a Tuesday. So we're trying to move toward using technology and making sure we're using that to be efficient and effective, but we've got to educate our customers about how to use that technology and how to use that app. We've talked about Mobile City Works. That's really, really important for us as we're rolling that out through our operating divisions. We've improved our... And the process of improving the mapping of our water distribution system, which is a heavy investment, but we've got to have a good, accurate map that our field crews can work off of. It's tied to GIS and tied to asset management. And then everybody knows about our AMI initiative, and that is going to be using technology to empower not only our staff, but our customers to look at water use and to make sure we've got accurate meter readings every time, every month. So that's really, really important for us. I want to talk a little bit more about the people and process improvements. We've invested this year in quite a bit of training for leadership development to make sure we're not just managing, but that we're leading our staff in the right direction, that we have engaged employees that are participating in what we do. There's nobody better to know how to fix a water main break than the guys that do it every day, rather than us telling them exactly how to do it. We want them coming back and giving us ideas on how to do this better, how to be more efficient at what we're doing. So we're trying to carry that throughout our organization. It's something called High Performance Organization, to where your customers, and I've heard many of you speak to it, we need to empower these folks to make decisions and to help drive the processes. That's the management philosophy that we're trying to work under. We're going to be restructuring a bit, and that is going to... We're going to focus even more on developing this customer service culture and dedicate staff to helping us fix the process breakdowns that we have now. We find ourselves stamping out the same fire over and over and over again, and that's not efficient. That's not acceptable. We've got to fix the process so we don't have to keep stamping out that same fire. We're all very, very busy, but if we could pause and fix that process, then we might have a little more time to do other things and other priorities instead of stamping out those fires. So that is going to be a real push for us, and we're going to start in customer service main, frontline areas, refining those processes so we're not answering those same questions over and over again. Many of those questions you have asked us. So we're going to be working on that and really, really pushing forward on that.
And will it be questionnaire-driven or will that be a part of...
So...
I don't want to get into anything...
No, sir.
Other than what we're...
We'll be reassigning key staff to work on these processes, but it'll be everybody's job to bring those ideas to the table and fix these things where we've got problems. We'll have workshops, High Performance Organization workshops. Dana's doing that in engineering already, and she's going to talk about some of those things. You flowchart the process, and you figure out, okay, where are we having a breakdown? Why does this keep happening over and over again? Why do we have a frustrated customer? So it'll be everybody's job, but there'll be people that will champion those exercises and will have time dedicated to do that rather than stamping out the fires. Yes, sir. The apprenticeship program is also very important, training our staff, giving them a forward career progression, getting the licenses that we need to be in compliance with regulatory requirements is really, really important. So that's an investment in our employees that we're excited about. I want to talk about a few strategic staffing changes that we're moving forward with. We've seen real estate is a little bit of a bottleneck in getting some of our work processed. They're working really hard, but the demands are more and more. We want to add some project managers. We're paying consultants to do some things that may make sense for our staff to do. Customer service, again, really big here and through, not necessarily staff additions, but reclassification and reassigning of priorities. That's going to be important. I wanted to show you the graphic here and talk about that just a little bit. You've seen a ramp-up in the number of staffing, the staff count within the Columbia Water Organization. We were staffing up for consent decree compliance. The big jump from 1617 to 1718 is not quite as big as it seems because we moved 34 positions that are in customer care, the call center, into the Columbia Water Organization. So we didn't add 34 new positions. We just moved them from one operating department into Columbia Water. And you can see the last few years, we've had a little bit of a leveling off. So our focus is to try to fill our key vacancies and to be efficient with our processes moving forward rather than just continuing to add to the staff count because that impacts the bottom line. So that's really what we're trying to do. You can see the bullet item, future staff reductions due to AMI efficiencies, and I wanted to say in front of you, and this is really to our employees as well, that read meters every day, we have made a commitment. If they're a good employee and they want to continue working for the City of Columbia, we've got plenty of good work for them to do. We've got plenty of vacancies within Columbia Water and throughout the City of Columbia family. Nobody's going to lose their job. They just may be doing something different. So that you may see an overall staff reduction due to we don't have to have 30 folks out lifting lids and reading meters, but we'll assign them to a vacancy that already exists, a position that exists somewhere else. And we've communicated that to them, and we're going to continue communicating that to our staff.
What's the, I guess, the timeframe for the phasing out of, transitioning of those positions?
Joey's going to speak to that in a little bit of detail, but it's a three-year transition, and within a month, we'll have the first AMI meters going in the ground.
Have you heard some angst?
And I'm Mr. Benjamin, by the way.
Whoa.
Before you call me... Before you call me Bedora Davis or something.
Don't you call him Bedora.
I'm on my A-game today, mayor.
Yeah. Have you heard some angst from employees about the transition?
We did about a year ago, and so we tried to head that off, and we... That same statement that I just articulated here, we've tried to articulate that to them, and we try to reinforce that routinely. And Ms. Wilson, I was just talking about that maybe yesterday. It's time for us to articulate that once again because it's...
Consistently, I think hearing that consistently from all of us is, we all have personal relationships with our employees who we value so much, then hearing that repeatedly is important.
Yes, sir.
And in addition to that, maybe having conversations to see if there's a particular area that they're interested in that they have, like, no experience, so maybe try some kind of apprenticeship or some transitions or training so they know that, you know, even you might feel like you don't have the skill set, but we'll work with you to get there to have this position if that's something you're interested in.
Yes, ma'am. I think some career counseling is, you know, career path counseling is really in order as we start. And again, we're probably... Again, Joey will give you some numbers, but it's going to be a little while until we're ready to reduce the count of meter readers, but it's here, and they're thinking about it, and we need to make sure we're communicating that to them.
Public safety.
Okay. I also wanted to mention, just in terms of key hires, we've got two deputy directors here with us today, and these are positions that were added in last year's budget, so I'm going to introduce them. Andrea Bowling. Andrea? She is our Deputy Director of Engineering, and so she's helping Dana on a daily basis and really engaged in some of those process improvements that Dana will talk about. And Joey Jacob has hired Frank Eskridge as his Deputy Director. Frank's a seasoned utility manager and really excited to have him. Blessed to have both of them on our team.
What do you mean, seasoned?
He's slightly older than I am. Sorry, Frank. He's got a lot of great experience.
And Andrea was an internal...
Internal promotion.
...promotion, and Frank came from...
So Frank came to us from Alabama by way of Beaufort and Greenville and spent 25 years with the Greenville Water System and helped run that utility. So a lot of... Both of them bring a lot of good experience to the table for us, and so we're just blessed to have them. I can absolutely honestly say that. So some of our initiatives moving forward, training our customer care staff on the information that AMI is going to bring to us and that they're going to have at their fingertips is really, really important, and how we communicate that to our customers on that one-on-one basis. Many of you have talked about the missing digit issue on our cutoff notices for water and how I can't enter in the telephone system my account number because I'm one-digit off. We hear you.
Firsthand, I know.
Yes, sir. We have been working on that for several months. The company that provides those services has not been responsive. We're looking for another company to provide those services to us to fix that problem. That is one of the processes. We've got to fix that. I mean, that's... We hear you loud and clear. And there are a couple of things on that list. We've got a list that are just nagging issues that we want to get resolved. We need to promote the new app a little bit more, try to get folks using that. So that's going to be an initiative for us moving forward. Having easy access to work order status for customer care staff. We've been working with the realty community about how we sign up new customers. We want new customers. It doesn't need to be hard to become a customer of Columbia Water. It is difficult now. We're working on refining that process. Some of that goes, is attached with the covenant issue, if you're in city, out of city, you know, and the annexation covenant. We're working to try to streamline that process, to have an electronic application, to minimize the number of touches that we've got to have. And then finally, y'all have a council update in front of you that you'll receive every month. We're working on that, but that gives you some statistics about call hold times, about the number of boil water advisories that we've had. Yes, ma'am. On the pages behind that... Yes, sir. The pages behind that first page show a map of each council district and a list of the projects that are happening and the type of projects that they are. Ultimately, we want those to be live links where you can click on that SS number or water project number and get more information about it if you want to. But that'll arm you to speak with your constituents every, you know, on whatever routine basis that you need to with that information.
Mrs. Bedora and I had already been asking about this and is really excited about it. Will it come electronically, Clint, to the council?
Yes, ma'am. That is our plan, to send out a PDF and for it ultimately to be an interactive PDF that you'll get. And I'll give credit to police. They send out the code enforcement report every month, and that made us think, okay, we really need to push it. The information's available, but we don't want y'all to have to go digging for it. We want to bring it right to you. Those are some of our initiatives. I'm going to turn it over to Joey, and he's going to talk about some utility operation details. And thank you again for your attention.
Thank you, Clint.
Before we discuss, I was just... And I shared this with the mayor, Ms. Wilson. Thinking about water, it's just on my mind. I know that, you know, there's been a lot of information, the press, and maybe misinformation regarding the Lower Richland Sewer and how we're handling that. And this, I think, was... This is really good, but I'm just wondering, my understanding is that, like, last night there was a meeting, and the takeaway, although it may not have been intended, the takeaway from some of the citizens were that the county sued the city and won, and therefore were... Yes. And so I got a couple of calls last night, well, two calls. But if we could, in addition to kind of us, I just think when there's, like, interests, big interest in particular water or sewer projects, making sure that we have, like, one-pagers or something that we can send out, make sure that citizens are aware of kind of what's happening with the city with particular, you know, projects that people are interested in.
So, for example, with... And, you know, there's been so many iterations of where we are with Lower Richland Sewer. Are you suggesting through these normal channels, because I wonder would the citizenry that is receiving upon the information at a meeting last night, would they get... Would they get this if we...
What meeting was it?
This channel? They wouldn't get this, so...
Said that they didn't... They couldn't figure out how to close on a deal because the numbers are in their document and they don't read the documents. Is that the meeting you're talking about?
I don't think so.
I'm just... Yeah, I told somebody, I told you, because there were some city residents there, and I told them not to read the documents, their representative. No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying one-pagers. I just think that, you know...
On those particular projects?
Yeah, projects that we know, and not just that one, but projects, you know, there's a lot of interest around that have lots of one-pagers where there could be some information so that citizens could have verified actual information regarding the city's involvement or position on particular issues. And not something technical, but just something...
What is the latest? So are they still doing engineering? Is that...
Yes, sir. So they've hired a consultant to do their design work, and that's where it stands now.
Well, some of them don't have said that we're not giving them a price, but so had they actually read the document, they would have known that the price had been pre-agreed upon before we even signed the agreement 18 years ago, so...
One of the county council people yesterday, their press conference, was it yesterday? Two days ago? Yesterday, so they were to start construction on January 1st.
But that's what they said last night, that they're starting construction January 1st, and that someone asked about the city's involvement, and they said that we were... That they had to sue us and won, and therefore we had no say-so.
Can we put that on the record and clear?
So what Ms. Devine is asking, and it's diplomatic where she can, is as easy as... Let's make it as easy as possible to articulate facts in layman's terms as to kind of where things are, and if it means us sending out some type of a notice, maybe we do that.
We can absolutely do that. And so we develop a nice summary sheet for our capital projects. We call it a tear sheet, and y'all have seen some of those before, but it's for public and it's just a quick one-pager, a couple of highlights. We can do that for controversial issues as well. That's an excellent idea, so we'll...
Thank you, Clint. I'm going to provide an update on just some recent efforts that we've had, some projects to improve our customer service and talk about drinking water, water quality projects, look at hydraulic, improving the hydraulics of our distribution system, which ultimately improves service to our customers, talk about our consent decree on the wastewater side, where we are with that effort, talk about the continued rehab efforts that we have. And Clint mentioned capital investment, our ask for this coming year. Normally, we are asking for $120 million CIP for water and sewer. This year, we're looking at $80 million CIP to try to bring it down, try to help with our rates this year, but also understand that we need to be responsible with the money that we have and look for ways that we know that we may not do a spend next year and try not to ask for it with this year's CIP, so...
So what does that mean, though? I mean, you're talking about reducing it, but is that helping us advance the ball? The purpose of the reason we went to the $120 million over that period of time is so that we can knock these projects off so that we get to where a point we're maintaining and not constantly doing it. Are we there? Because what you're saying is you're trying to ease... I mean, the pain's going to be there if you get it next year or not, and that's what we did in the past that was so detrimental to our system is we kept pushing things off because nobody wanted to do an increase and keep moving. We need to make sure we stay on target. So when you say that, I want... I just want to make sure that we're not...
What's the rationale? What's the rationale? Is that the ability to move projects as quickly and just not... What's the rationale?
So the understanding is, is there's some projects, and large projects in our CIP that are still in the planning, design phase, that it's going to be difficult for us to get across the finish line for this year. So we'd like to hold back on the construction aspect of those projects, understanding that it's going to be difficult for us to get to that point. So let's not put it in this year's ask to try to hold back on the rate for this year, understanding that we're not slowing down, we're not stopping doing things, but...
You're still going to have to ask.
Do a little bit of catch-up, yes, sir.
You're still going to have to ask, so you're just delaying, and costs aren't going down. You know, I mean, I guess, I don't fully understand your rationale.
I think it may help once Robert's presentation complements what they're talking about. You know, we're always conscious of single-digit increases versus double-digit increases and trying to, as best we can, stretch it out where it's as comfortable as possible for everybody. We're not slowing down, but I am also conscious of, and I think it'll make a lot more sense as they go through the presentation, of projects getting done, and also the ability, as we start weaning ourselves off... And also the ability, as we start weaning ourselves off CDM as much as they're here with us today and are always in lockstep with us. But there's going to come a time where we want a lot even more on our own. And we just want to make sure that when you're asking for rate increases, which we're going to have to do, your constituents also see and our citizens and customers also see what we're getting done every year and it's a good balance. But I think it'll make more sense as Joey finishes.
Okay. Let's hear it all.
One other quick comment, just when we looked at the CIP, there were simply some projects that jumped out and we said, you know, we're not going to be ready to fund that, the construction. We're not going to be ready to move forward the construction. We're just not there. That's still going to be in design and bidding, so why would we borrow the money to fund it in this year? As you look forward, we're asking for 80 this year. Every other year is still 120 for a five-year projection, so.
Where's the 40?
Well, it's in year six. And year six is not 160, it's still 120. We saw some things that we could slide out. And if you think about it in terms of one project, last year we would have signed a contract for $37 million to build Crane Creek Storage, that when we looked at it collectively, we came to the decision, we don't have to do that right now. We can design three other projects. Those projects are under design, not ready to start construction yet. We can defer that spend and that really is part of that gap that created that gap.
Pipe it for 10 million somewhere else.
Well, we can pipe it, we can spend that money and pipe it differently than building the storage thing.
All right. Okay, so, starting with the drinking water efforts. We're doing a lot of, we've come to talk to y'all before, just the operation side on City Works. We're doing, on the wastewater side, we've implemented mobile City Works now. We're doing a lot of asset management, mapping our system, getting to know our system a little bit better, making sure we have all of our assets accounted for. We're doing that on the water side now. We're about to put an RFP out to do mapping on the water side to mimic what we did on the wastewater side. When we started the consent decree, we said, you know, we've got to do this, we're going to do this, and let's do it on the wastewater side, learn our lesson, let's do it on the water side as well. So we're doing that as a part of our operation today. Water quality projects, that's huge on our radar. We've got about 27, over $27 million worth of water quality projects, either in design or construction today. We've got four of them listed here. These are probably the big fours, probably a little over $15 million for Booker Washington Heights, which was recently, recently started construction. Earlwood is under construction. Covenant Road and Harrison Road, we're about finished with that project. Lake Catherine's a huge water quality project we just bid. So these are, these are some big projects where we're going in improving our water system assets today. Yes, sir.
When you come in down Covenant Road, that's the one I ride on most of, Covenant and Harrison. Are you going to flip back to AMI meters instead of putting back your old meters?
So today, we're still dropping our manual read meters. Beginning in June, we will be dropping AMI meters. What, and I'll get to that slide here in a minute, but we're just not ready to drop the AMI meters yet, so. But these meters too, we're not necessarily replacing all these meters. These are existing meters today, we're just repiping them.
Joey, I know the calls that I've been getting about brown water is a lot better than it was a few years ago. The only concern or the continuing brown water issue I still have in the Hollywood Rose Hill neighborhood. Is there any future plans to line the pipes or are y'all doing anything like that?
We are, we're actually doing some projects in-house for that area, but when I get to the water CIP, we've got Rosewood and Shandon. Those are some big areas that are in this year's that we've got in the planning stage right now for work, so those are some big projects coming up. But yes, sir, Rosewood, Hayward Street, those areas that we've historically had water quality, and we've done some work already, but we've not finished in that area. But it's, we've actually got some in-house projects that we're doing right now, but it is in our CIP to do that.
Can you email me a list of those three concentrated areas so we can share that with the members?
Yes, sir. Yep. Okay. So at our water treatment plant, our canal water treatment plant, we've got a huge, if you've been to our water plant or just on the canal front lately, you see a lot of construction going on at our canal plant. We're replacing old aged infrastructure at our plants. I mean, we're replacing 50, 60, 1950, 1960 vintage pumps and controls at our plants today. So we're really improving the reliability, the efficiency of our operation at the plants, at the source. We're replacing our clear wells. If you go by there, you'll see it looks like we're building a skyscraper at our water treatment plant right now with the work we've got going on. So really, a huge investment there. We're placing, we're doing a lot of work to our filters, just really taking the aged infrastructure, updating it, making it more efficient and more reliable at source. So our AMI, we can't do this fast enough, but we've got the contractor in place. The contractor has, in the past few months since we've got it approved, they've been doing a lot of field reconnaissance, looking at what we have in the ground today, the meter boxes, the type of meters. I mean, these guys do it all over the place, but they need to come and see what we have as far as the efforts that are going to be needed to replacing all the meters with the new AMI meter. So.
Who is the contractor?
Oh, Badger is the meter manufacturer. There's, UMS is the sub, thank you. So Badger, it's the Badger AMI meter. That's what we approved. They are the prime and then they have a sub that's doing all the installation. Yes, sir.
What area you're talking?
We've got some maps planned out. It's not in one area. Our initial, we'll start dropping meters in June. Our goal is to have 25,000 meters by the end of this year. And it's a three-year process, as Clint mentioned, to have all the meters installed. So at the end of this year, there will be routes, several routes, that will be read through the AMI meter. So it's, and as far as the area, I mean, we have, we're looking at, our initial drop is, we're looking at the prison. We're looking at areas that are difficult to access and that may be difficult to install. So we're, contractors are not starting in the easiest area, but they do have some areas that are not as difficult. So just really trying to get a feel of what they're, what project they're starting.
Are you coming into the quartet city or are you going out or?
We're doing a little bit. We're doing in, we're doing out. We're doing, we're trying to hit council districts. We're trying to hit routes that are difficult to read. So like we have routes that, that one person may have to drive to each meter, whereas most routes, the meter walks to every meter. So it takes more time for that person to read that route, so that might be the route furthest out to start with, so we can start seeing efficiencies today with the meters that we're dropping. So, but they're, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Please, you can finish, finish.
Okay. So we're trying to hit all different areas. We're not focusing on one area and then to another area. We're really trying to, they've got a plan to do it. It's, I don't know that I could give you the exact layout, but we, there's more to come on this. This is really just, this is where we are today, but we do intend to come back to council and say, this is our implementation schedule and these are the areas that we're going to be hitting.
Are they putting, sorry, are they putting a door tag or anything like after they placed a meeting to flush their water lines?
Yes, sir. As the contractor does the work, we've actually, as part of the public outreach, we've approved the door hangers. They'll be making contact with the customer, but just to let them know that we're going to be replacing your water meter. Doesn't mean you won't have water service. It'll just be like a 30-minute period that they actually change out the meter. So the meter changeout's actually very quick. So the customer, if they're home, they will see a disruption of service, but it'll be a very short disruption. But we're really trying to communicate that you do have a new AMI meter now and there'll be more to come with that as well. Yes, sir. Go back one slide, Joey, if you can.
I've been, spent some time on the phone today with Senator Graham's staff and obviously a follow-up to Ms. Devine, Mr. Davis's meetings last week and conversations we've all been having with them about him, the governor and congressman and others stepping up the heat on FEMA and the rest of our friends to help with canal restoration as they're supposed to do. So just, I was just wanting to get my head wrapped.
So this is the, our treatment plant. I've got another slide to cover the canal embankment itself, so I'll pause there.
I know, I know.
Okay.
But we're making significant investments.
Yes, sir, we are, absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So when you talked about like communication with the citizens, what actually physically will they see during a switch-out? Will there be any disruption or digging up yards or what?
So the meter changeout will be in the box, but that doesn't mean, I mean, we may have to, I guess the worst thing that could happen is the entire box has to be changed. So that's really, as far as a yard restoration, there's really not a lot to it. There would be some meters that all we do is change the lid. Every lid has to be changed because it's an AMI meter. We have to make sure that we can get a signal to the meter. It's a cellular service. So, so at least every lid's going to be changed on our meters now. And there's really more to come on this. I don't want to get in too much detail, but the disruption will be at the meter, restoration will be associated just around the meter. But there will be door hangers that are placed out to customers to let them know that they're coming and to let them know what has happened or will be happening. And we can share all that information with you once they start doing the work, because I understand council may be contacted concerning. Yes, ma'am. Councilman Davis, do you have something? I thought you had your hand up.
No, no, no. I think that's.
I think I can answer that.
I did.
My name's Sam.
Okay, Sam, I'm sorry. I forgot we're on First Name Business. Bless you.
God bless you.
So.
He's still messing with Clint.
So as we lay out our CIP every year, we do have priorities that we look at. And of course, regulatory compliance and water quality on the drinking water side is our top priority, really just trying to make sure we're providing quality at the tap. So regulatory, we have to meet our regulations and in water quality, we want to make sure that we provide a good product at the tap. As we do these projects, though, we also improve fire protect. Anytime we go into a neighborhood and we're replacing pipe, we're improving fire protection. So as we do these projects, we do improve the performance of our system. But we also have to look at system expansion. I'll show our CIP here in a minute. And we've been making efforts to get more Lake Murray water into our system. And so some of our CIP coming up is to continue that process. It's been a long journey to get there, but continue the process to do that. So can't talk about water distribution without talking about our Columbia Canal. We've been really working hard, working with our consultants after the event to look at what the damage is from that, what the repair needs to be, and really exploring all options for funding. Our folks have done a very good job working to make sure that we are looking at every option for funding. So we're.
Got a couple more for you, Joey.
Okay, excellent. So, so we'll be continuing those efforts. We've actually laid out a plan to FERC. FERC has basically said, you need to make a repair and you need to give us a plan and we've done that. We have a, it's like a two-stage plan where we're going to go ahead and look at doing an alternate supply, temporary alternate supply to the river. That provides us that, that reduces the risk that we had in 2015. And then we'll be looking at that, making that permanent going in the future on the second phase. So, so there's more to come on that as well. So I mentioned our CIP ask this year is for water. We normally ask for 40. We're asking for 25.5 this year for our CIP ask. And again, we're focusing on water quality, distribution improvements, moving water better through our system, getting water to our northeast outer portions of our system, really improving the hydraulic efficiency of our system. So here's a map illustrating some areas and you've got a print out of this and we can get you a better print out of this. I don't know if that's me. But really focusing on some of the, some of the projects that are underway on here are water quality projects. Some of the additional areas is the Rosewood and Shandon projects. Those are where we're looking at the, these are older neighborhoods. You can see Earlwood, Rosewood, all these areas, they're older neighborhoods, more established neighborhoods and this, that's where you typically see these type problems because you have an older water system in those areas. So, but also in the outer parts of our system in the northeast, we've got a project that was part, if you remember, 10 years ago, we did a big push to get more water to the northeast. And we're continuing that effort and that's really pushing more Lake Murray water into our system, which provides a better, better, be able to use of both plants. So moving on to wastewater, our efforts here, as you know, with our consent decree, we're doing a lot of work to assess our system and rehabilitate our system. So we've got a number of our sewer basins today that are under some form of evaluation or rehabilitation. We're doing a lot of rehab right now in our system and I think, and especially again, talking about the older neighborhoods downtown, but also in the outer parts of our system. I think, I know some of y'all constituents have expressed concerns because we're doing work and as you do work, unfortunately, there is disruptions. Capacity enhancement, we're doing a lot of work with capacity enhancement. Crane Creek is an example. We've done a lot there. We had a chronic SSO location there. We've replaced that. But in doing that, that opens up our system to growth. So we've got about 15 projects that are in some form of either design or construction today. It's about $142 million effort. We're looking, these are the areas of our major outfalls, Crane Creek, Rocky Branch, we've done a lot of work in Saluda. But these projects, we're replacing areas that we have chronic SSOs, but when we do that, we also open the system up for expansion. And we, you may have heard the expression, you can't have, you don't see the cranes until you see the backos. You can't, we can't put these big developments in until we have the resources to be able to serve the developments. So that's, that's what we're really talking about with these capacity enhancement projects, building capacity in our system, but at the same time doing the efforts that we need to, to reduce the SSOs. We've got a number of sewer pump stations, about 26 of them, which is about half of our pump stations, a little less than half. I think we have about 57 stations, 26 of them under some form of evaluation, design or rehabilitation right now. Lake Catherine's always been a big topic for us. Lake Catherine Construction Project has begun. The contractor has begun to work. This is an area that is technically a capacity limited area. Fortunately, there's not a lot of development potential in that area, but if we had a big development come to the Lake Catherine sewer basin right now, we may have to say we can't serve you because we have a chronic SSO and as part of our agreement with EPA is when we have these situations, we won't add large developments. So with this project, we'll be solving the SSO, but we'll also be opening the system back up for development. And Crane Creek was an example. We had the same situation Crane Creek. Rocky Branch could be an example. So these capacity enhancement projects are really important for us to do.
Is the line going in south of Garnas Perry at Gil's Creek, Ireland? Where the old, where the county owns that property across the street and by the way?
That's a temporary.
Yes, that's part of the Lake Catherine project. But we do have a temporary line dating back to 2015. We're bypassing a line there today where the old, the building was just demolished recently. Yeah, yes, yes. So, so that's, that's the Lake Catherine project. That's the lay-down area for our contractor. So wastewater treatment plant, our digester project, as we've discussed this previously, we're, we're making headway on our digesters, hope to have all digesters by the end of this year back in use, helps us with our solids and helps us to produce a sustainable product potentially at our wastewater treatment plant. Our Mill Creek Pump Station is one of our five large pump stations. We, a few years ago, we did a 30-inch force main project for the Mill Creek Station, replacing a 24-inch concrete force mains, pressurized pipe that comes out of the pump station that dates back to when the pump station was built. We had some capacity issues related to that pipe and the pump station. Had some, historically have had some breaks in that line. We replaced that line a few years ago with a 30-inch pipe that actually goes all the way to the treatment plant. And by doing that, we opened that area up, reducing some of our capacity issues in that area, some historic SSOs. But we opened up that area to, the industrial park is in that area. So here's another example of a project where we've solved a problem, but we've also opened up capacity. We would not have been able to add Juicy without this particular project happening. So again, a large project that we did a couple of years ago, understanding at the time that we had to do it, but it opens up an opportunity of doing that project. Then Avista is another example. The Inavista is another example. We did a lot of work in the Inavista to, for the potential developments downtown.
Do you remember how much our improvements were in that area?
The Inavista? We could find that. I don't know, have the exact number, but I, it's probably in the ballpark of three to five million, I would guess. Yeah, about three? Okay. So, but really opening, the Compress is an example. Some housing developments in those areas are developments that occurred because we did this work in these areas. But also, Inavista is a huge development potential. But, and the reason we did it was because we had issues in the area as well, so, again.
Might not be a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Miss Wilson, is the improvements that we've done, were those the ones that I've contemplated when we talked about a TIF? And does that do everything that we were thinking? Or would, if that potentially happens, would there still be additional infrastructure work that would be done?
I would think yes, off the top of my head, in this environment, we probably need to look into that, and I think some of those plans have changed a lot since then, so.
I just wondered, and I don't mean like the others, additional benefit stuff.
Right.
But I'm just underground infrastructure. Yeah, I'm just wondering about that.
I would venture to say it would, certainly won't hurt anything, but with some of the just chatter we're hearing, I don't know that it would do everything that would be necessary. And I.
And we do have, not in this presentation, but we do have some other large sewer projects that cross some of those properties as well that we'll be doing separate, projects that we have to do separate from the Inavista development, so. Sewer use ordinance, I wanted to mention this today, not to go into a lot of detail, but by June 4th, we intend to have the sewer use ordinance revisions in front of council for approval. We've been working with DEAC, EPA, for several years now. I think we've gone through two plant renewals, discharge renewals, in discussing this ordinance. And the real issue is, is our pre-treatment ordinance is dated, and the regulations have changed a little bit. So, we're updating our ordinance to accommodate those pre-treatment regulation changes, to implement some enforcement abilities on our part when industry may not be doing what they're supposed to be doing as far as pre-treatment goes. But, this is just really a, just a heads up, this is going to be on, I think, the June 4th agenda for approval. So, just wanted council, we can answer questions now or then, not really giving a lot of detail today, but just wanted to give council an update that this is coming. Yes, sir.
Did developers and business leaders affect their projects in the future?
The, I think the real change is for potential industries that may come to our system. So, I don't know anyone that this is going to directly affect today, other than our existing pre-treatment customers. It changes some of our enforcement actions. Should we have a pre-treatment industry that's not doing what they're supposed to be doing? It allows, gives us abilities to offer a fine, gives us the ability to cut their water off, and even take it even further than that as far as enforcement goes, to be able to do what we need to do, to make sure they're doing what they need to do. But, and the pre-treatment, we're a utility that has a pre-treatment, pre-treatment system, and so, we have the ability to add an industry. Some sewer utilities aren't able to do that. So, it's beneficial for us to have that, because we can pick up a Juicy or a large customer or industry. But, with this ordinance revision, we're really making some changes that have been made in the regulations that our ordinance do not reflect today. So, and we can go into more detail if needed when this is on the agenda. Okay? So, update on our consent decree deliverables. It's not really a lot this change as far as our deliverables since the last time we were here, but, so 13 of 17 major deliverables have been made, have been approved by EPA, and those really covered how we map our system, how we operate, how we train, or how we account for our finances and so forth, how we evaluate our system. And the next four deliverables really hit on capacity of our system. The next deliverable is the infrastructure rehabilitation report, which is due in November of this year. And what that is, is we told EPA, this is how we're going to map our system, this is how we're going to evaluate our system for performance, and as a result of that, we have to lay out projects. So, here are the projects that we're giving EPA. These are the projects that we're going to do, and we have to do them in a five to seven year timeframe. So, end of this year, we'll be coming back, obviously before it goes on public notice later this year, but it's due to EPA in November. But these will have enforceable deadlines, and these are projects that we're going to be obligated to do as a part of our consent decree. And the major assets that we've done the evaluation of, we're estimating about an $80 million spend right now on the update, upgrade of these assets, and that's what we're going to be delivering to EPA. And that number may come down before we make the deliverable, that's just where we are today. But, just an update of where we are in the process, as you recall, we signed in 2014, so we're five years in. We estimate that it could be a 12 to 15-year agreement with EPA. So, you could say we're about a third of the way into the program, but we're about to hit to the point where we're going to be laying the projects out to EPA that we're going to be doing with deadlines and associated fines with those deadlines. So, any questions on that? So, when we started our consent, and we brought CDM on to help us, and it's really benefited us to have a program manager as a part of this, we presented to council what we estimated the spend to be, and really, a lot of these projects were already in our capital improvement program, but we had to more formally, I guess, lay them out in our program, present them to EPA. So, where we are today, we've encumbered about $300 million in funds that we can say that are directly associated with our consent decree. And the good news is we're on track, we're, everything's been delivered on time, and we're really in good standing with EPA at the moment. So, I think there is success in here. We've improved our system, and we'll continue to do that as we finish this process. So, talking about SSO volume, the reason we're in a consent decree is for us to reduce, potentially eliminate our SSOs. We always like to update council where we are on our SSO volume, being fully transparent of what we have. As we've presented before, we're, we report everything to EPA. If there is one gallon that hits the ground at a cleanout, and it's associated with our system, we report it. So, and there's a volume associated with that. So, you can see on the bar chart here, in 2015, 2016, obviously in 15, we had Crane Creek project was not done yet, we had a flood, so we had a huge volume associated with that. And you can see on the blue lines, we've got a downward trend on the volume. Clint and I came, I think it was last fall, we presented and said, huge success, we're bringing the volumes down, and end of the year, we had a very wet year. So, in the system, we fared very well at our treatment plant. We had a, what's called an unintended bypass, and I believe we came to council and gave an update. But, what happened is, towards the end of the year, we had record flows coming into our wastewater treatment plant. On top of that, we're doing, we are doing our aeration project, which reduces the capacity of our plant. We're using our EQ basin on a daily basis as a part of that. Well, with these record flows coming into the plant, we're pumping a lot of flow into our EQ basin, which basically low flow times comes back into the plant. It is partially treated. So, as it goes to the basin, we had a, we'll call it an equipment failure in the basin. We had a pipe that was plugged, that most of our staff didn't even know existed. It dates all the way back to when the EQ basin was built. It drained to a storm drain. Well, even during 2015, we saw levels in our EQ basin even above what we had last year, but never experienced what we experienced last year. The plug failed, and as a result of that, we lost flow from our EQ basin. We were able to repair it, we were able to recapture a lot of that flow, but we did lose some of the flow. So, that's what the red line represents, is we did have a huge reduction. So, if you follow the blue line, we are on a downward trend, but being fully transparent with our customers, with DEAC, with everyone, we wanted to just point out that it was not a raw sewage, it was a partially treated sewage that did, that we did lose at the plant, so. Our priorities on our wastewater side, very similar to our water side, regulatory compliance, consent decree is top, that rolls into system rehabilitation, wastewater treatment plan improvements are up there. And what we refer to as expansion is really a lower priority, but it is something that we have to do as we improve the hydraulics of our system, the capacity of our system, the continued development in our system. So, our CIP asked this year, typically, we would ask for an $80 million CIP. We're asking for 54.5, recognizing some projects that we can not stop or slow down, but understand that it may be difficult to get out, and just trying to help our rating this year. And again, focusing on collection system rehabilitation and capacity enhancement. So, here's a map, and I'm sorry, it may be a little difficult to read. When we show our wastewater projects, we usually fill the exhibit up with projects, but, so, what is presented there is we do have a lot of rehabilitation projects, and we're doing some SSEs rehab work in our Broad River Basin, continuing works, continuing work in our Saluda Basin, continuing work in our Rocky Branch Basin, doing some SSEs work, and some rehabilitation work associated with that basin in the downtown area. So, we're doing, we're continuing our efforts on the capacity enhancement and rehabilitation work in our system, so. All right, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dana.
So, I was going to talk a little bit about engineering and stormwater. If y'all haven't been up to the seventh floor of Washington Square in a while, I wanted to get a picture of our updates. We have a very big focus on customer service, so we did a little upgrade of our entrance. Seventh floor is kind of the clearinghouse for plans that are submitted for water and sewer outside of city limits, and we also received tap sales and new customers for meters. So, we wanted to make sure we had a forward-facing, front-of-face, very friendly. Just some things that we've been working on, as Clint had mentioned, we have been coming out of our management positions and going into more of a leadership meeting with several different parties within our department, and we've been reviewing our processes and trying to see where we can improve our efficiencies, creating standard operating procedures across the board, so we're consistent across the department. We've also been meeting with the BIA Building Industry Association. We've been having success in updating our record drawing checklist to make sure the engineers submit complete plans when they come in. We've been defining timelines, we've been putting in some quality control reviews on our processes, trying to cut down on the timeframe. As part of that, we are also moving to electronic permitting, working with the PMO office with Ms. Kaufman, and trying to bring in a customer portal that we can have electronics middle of plans and have more transparency about where it is in the process. So, some really great stuff. In addition, part of the critical path items we've noticed in our staffing, real estate, as Clint mentioned, we have issues with the amount of workload, so we're able to bring in a couple more real estate agents that have been helpful on that, as well as next fiscal year, we're looking at trying to get some help on bringing easements, helping do research, that seems to be a problem area as well. And with all of our stormwater projects, we also have brought in some additional inspectors and project managers. So, the stormwater green bonds that were issued back in December of 2018, we're very proud of. We have $38 million that we've been moving quite nicely on. The green represents construction projects, yellow is design, and blue is planning. Some of the projects that we've been working on are the Queen Street project over in Old Shandon. We have the Marion Street bumpouts, Penn Branch, a lot of the blue are, we've got $3 million that have been approved by y'all on consultant projects, and another million that's pending with Yorkshire, as well as the Whaley and Maine, goes all the way up to Greg and Gervais that affects constant car wash. So, those will be coming to you within the next month or so for approval. Some of the successes, we have finished up MLK Park. I don't know if anybody's been out there to see it, but it's a great project, really, really proud of that. Not only were we able to maximize the usable space for park users, we didn't impact the amount of usable space, but we were able to create water quality as well as water quantity impacts. So, we've already been running some analysis where it has been shaping the peak to five points.
And I would just add, because we talked about when we did that, the multi-use benefits of that as far as education.
Yes, ma'am.
Happy to announce that the Logan Lefferts Leadership Group did their field trip, well, we did the five points, but that's where we had lunch, and they were able to have a view, and the teacher talked to them about it, so we really enjoyed it.
That's great. Thank you for sharing. That's exactly what we were hoping it would happen.
You see, initially, when we got the park done, of course, there was still some runoff.
Yes, sir.
And folk were concerned about that.
Right.
We got that.
So, there's some man-made wetlands, which is the water quality aspect? Right, so we are, we're analyzing it right now with the contractor, and if there are low areas, which we are adjusting some of the outfalls. Yes, sir. Another, oh, great. Another project we're very proud of is the Wallace Street Cotton Town improvements. A lot of flooding has occurred historically in the Cotton Town area, Franklin and Wallace Street. Probably have, remember it from the Bull Street traffic shift. We had a very large interceptor box, so we were putting in an 84-inch pipe under Bull and adding a 48-inch pipe along Wallace Street. So, that just completed, that was a, we spent $3 million in stormwater money and $3 million in water quality, bringing up the actual drinking water pipes. So, we've already started having our public meetings. Back in March, we had a meeting with, about the Queen Street project on Old Shandon. We had a good turnout, and we are moving forward with looking at creating some detention areas. There's some traditional flooding in that area, so the residents are very excited about that. And Mr. Bedore and I will be attending the Shandon Public Meeting this Thursday at Hand Middle School from 6:00 to 7:30. So, that's a, we're very excited, and getting a lot of positive feedback from the community on these stormwater projects that are upcoming.
Are we doing, I know, I think we discussed in the past, just doing some basic snail mail to constituents?
After the first, the first one went out in the water bills this last cycle, because I know I got mine.
On each of these improvements? On each of these improvements? I mean, making sure the folks in Five Points know about King Park, and don't assume that they do. I mean, just making sure the folks in Cotton Town know exactly what's happened. I think it's, and this is the easiest way to get things straight to people.
Sure.
It doesn't have to be an insert, even if it's just a piece of mail.
Yeah, we did the mail out for the public meetings, but we can certainly do updates to these neighborhoods that are getting the improvements to make sure they're aware of it. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I think it's important.
Is Wallace Street finished now?
Yes, sir, it's finalized.
That one went well.
Yes, sir.
I know only one major call, I got one out.
I think everyone is enjoying the impact of the improvements.
Make a big difference.
Yes, sir. So, some of the other things we're working on, we have started a stormwater inventory and condition assessment pilot project. We're looking at $3 million there, just looking at all the stormwater condition, the infrastructure, similar to what the water and sewer area is doing as well. And we're taking easement information within that area, because that's part of the issues, which I'm sure y'all are very aware of, is who owns it, who's responsible for maintaining it. So, we're trying to gather all that information and come up with a policy that makes sense, and we'll bring forward to y'all. In addition, we are very excited about our community-based P3 Low Impact Development Project. We've been working with Benedict College to partner with them on a low-impact bio-retention areas. We've talked to them about having opportunities for learning, but also working with OBO Office to create a program that will mimic, similar to what was done at the ballpark, where we create jobs and bring people from the community, that will give them an opportunity to have sustainable jobs that'll be permanent. So, it's been really successful so far, and we're looking forward to continuing that relationship. And we've been meeting with our community stakeholders, for example, Rocky Branch, we meet with USC, as well as Rocky Branch Watershed Association, getting a lot of really positive feedback from everyone we've been meeting with. And with that, I will hand it back over to Clint.
Thank you, Dana.
You got her name right.
I did. And I'm about to introduce, it is Robert. Okay, I'm about to introduce Robert. Just really quickly, and I'll be very brief. We have won a few awards, a few state awards, and a few capital district awards, and some season person awards for Silver Water Drop. We've been recognized within the industry for some safety initiatives, and we just yesterday celebrated getting that last piece of pipe out of the Lower Saluda River at Friars Gate. We're.
River at Friars Gate, at Saluda Shoals Park. So that was a nice ceremony where we physically removed the last piece of pipe. So we're doing some good things. I appreciate y'all encouraging us to think out of the box and to invest in infrastructure. Had we not invested $18 million in Saluda River Pump Station and Storage four to five years ago, we would not have been able to do that for Friars Gate and get that discharge out of the river. So these investments are paying off, and they're helping the local community and our customers and helping protect the environment. So we really appreciate the support. I want to answer any questions that you might have while Erica helps us transition over for Robert's presentation.
The, so I guess it may, maybe Robert's presentation might need to come before. Just want to go back to Daniel's original question, so we'll hear from Robert first. It's very well done, guys. Incredibly well done.
Thank you very much, Clint. Good evening. Before I get going, we would just like to thank you for giving us Black and Beach the opportunity to serve in this capacity. You know, before I start, I'd just like to acknowledge that, you know, a lot of work and effort went into, as it always is, this year's process with staff, you know, around here, you know, it's a collective team, and we really enjoyed and appreciated being a part of the team. So to get going, we're going to go over the drivers, some basic drivers, the assumptions we utilize as a part of the forecast, review the forecast, the financial plan, and then look at the potential bill impacts, the impacts to your existing customers. So you've, you've heard the story. You've seen the presentations from Clint, Joey, Dana, that kind of lays out your path and the journey and where you are currently and where you're trying to go. As it relates to this component of the presentation, the goal here, it's a three-legged stool, in our opinion. You have the financial planning component, and that goes about providing somewhat of an integrated financial plan and roadmap. Okay? And as a part of that roadmap, you've been, you've been connected and you've taken action. Another part of that roadmap is business excellence. How do you, and you've heard the term sustainability, resilience, how do you continue to be operationally resilient? How can you react to, you know, a circumstance that you probably didn't expect, an unintended consequence? And then the third leg of this stool is, you know, how do you continue to be engaged with your stakeholders, with your customers? And you can tell that there's been a huge focus on continuing to be engaged. Okay? So issues around the demand for your services, you know, how does growth affect your, you know, the demand for your services? You know, how do you implement your capital and operational programs, you know, in a sustainable manner? You know, you have enough people, processes, systems, and the actual technology to implement these programs. And then how do you maintain revenue stability? And in maintaining this revenue stability, meet your financial metrics. So this to us kind of brings together a little of what has just been presented. And what we'll try to do here is, you know, divulge and show potentially what this may look like as it relates to the financial impact going forward. So as a part of this process, you've gone about taking action. You know, you've gone about looking at historically what you've needed as it relates to a rate increase or revenue increases, and taking actions around implementing those increases. You've seen this slide before, and the message associated with this slide is, you know, you try to prevent lumps in implementing rate increases, because if you have a lump this year, you'll have to try to make it up next year. Okay? Historically, we've had lumps in a few of the earlier years, but in recent times, we have one or two years with no lumps. So, you know, I would just like to acknowledge that you all have taken action as it relates to, you know, doing what you need to do from your seat to support the process and the So going into our assumptions, you know, we'll start with our revenue assumptions and our revenue requirement assumptions. So as it relates to revenues, the starting point for FYO '19 revenues is about 140.4 million. And FYO '19 is what we call our base year, our initial year. We're currently in that year, and it's about to be complete. Our forecast period will start in FYO '20 through '24. So the financial plan that you'll see is in FY '20 through '24. We're assuming a 1% growth in customers. And then going forward, starting in FYO '20, we estimate about 15.4 million in other revenue sources. The difference between the two revenue sources is the 140.4, which is the starting point in '19, are your user rate revenues. The 15.4 are other revenue sources. You have the Richland County adjustment, you have meter installations, you know, the Carolina water adjustment, you know, plant expansion fees, so other services that contribute to your pool of revenues. So summarizing it and bringing it all together.
That's with the rate increase.
Yeah, this, yes, and this slide shows everything with the rate increase. So in summarizing it and bringing it together, it's forecasted that in FYO '19, you'll be at about 140.4 million, and at the end of FYO '19, you'll be at about 153.4. That's line eight. When we look at the initial and the first year of the forecast period, FYO '20, we're estimating about 141.8 million with a 7.06% increase, which totals about 151.7 for total revenues in FYO '20 of about 167.2. Okay? So it's an aggregate increase, you know, across the board of around 9%. Okay, looking at revenue requirements. So for the FYO '20 budget year, which is the first budget year, we're looking at an O&amp;M requirement of about 92.3 million. You know, we're assuming about a 4%, you know, annual growth, which should consider, you know, general inflation, other items such as costs and requirements associated with the Clean Water Act. As it relates to debt service, we're looking at a starting point in FYO '20 of about 37.5 million. You know, and then we have our other.
That's just an existing debt payment we have currently, so we won't see the new debt payment until 2020?
No. No, not 2020, till about 2021, because of how the debt service will come in. But yes, sir, that's correct.
What will that proposed payment look like?
And I'll show you in like three or four slides, if I'm not mistaken. Okay? And then we have our other expenditures, our pay-go, you know, how much funds from operations we'll utilize to pay for capital requirements. So our revenue adjustments, you know, we're taking a balanced approach as it relates to going about meeting your capital and operating requirements. You know, we've established a plan and options as it relates to how you go about financing these requirements around meeting debt service coverage, which is a 2.0, around having a balanced financing, a mix of cash versus debt, and then also making sure that when the increase does come in, it is at the lowest possible cost to the customers that you serve. So we consider multiple variables in looking at and understanding that balanced approach. And that comes back to that three-legged stool we spoke about in the beginning. So the financial plan. A few assumptions as it relates to the financial plan, and I'm not going to read every assumption, but as highlighted by Joey, Mr. Jacob, in FYO '20, we're looking at a CIP of about 80 million. And from '21 through '24, for the rest of the forecast period, we're looking at about 120 million. Over the life of the forecast period, we're looking at about 34% in cash financing, 65.4 in revenue bonds, and we have a West Columbia contribution. We're hitting our financial metrics. We've considered a few other revenue sources, along with incremental revenue sources, and we plan to issue bonds over, you know, the forecast period as we typically do. In FY, in FYO '20, in FYO '20, we've issued a bond amount of 140, we've planned a bond amount of 149 million, and I'll point it out to you before you ax. The reason being is, as staff has highlighted, as it relates to projects and how you fund projects and looking at the requirements, there's not going to be bond funding that will be utilized in FYO '19. That requirement will be moved to fund those projects through a bond that will be tendered in FYO '20. So the total funding that you see there is for '19 and '20 worth of bond funding, and then a reimbursement resolution will be put in place to reimburse the fund for the '19 bonds.
That's about a half a billion dollars up there, right in the, if I do my math quickly.
It, there, thereabouts. And I don't say that to be.
Four-year period?
It's really a five, it's really a five-year period. And if you look at the size of your capital program, it's in alignment with the size of your program.
So at the end of that five-year term, what's our debt service look like? And our revenue? Do we have that projection out?
That, that's going to be the slide that, I'll just go there.
But before you go there, Robert, though, go back. So when Joey talked about the 54 million, that's this current year, that's '18, '19? What's proposed for '19, '20?
Yeah.
Okay, so up here it says.
That was sewer, that was sewer, right.
Oh, that was, okay. So, yeah. Okay. Water, okay.
Yeah, this '18, '18, I'm sorry, so the entire.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
So I have another question for you. So we keep talking about the readjustments in the contracts and some of the companies or some of the big contracts we have, increasing annual, did you include that in the adjusted revenue for this coming budget year, or?
Yes, we did. So that 15.4 you saw has some of those adjustments.
And still with the 1% growth?
Correct.
All that is in there?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So we're adding $15 million revenue from last year's and this year?
No.
Go back a little thing, I don't follow your 15 million. So it's 1 million with the 1%, one and a half, right?
So you're asking what's the value of that 1%? Yes, somewhere thereabouts, one point, yeah.
Where is the value and adjustments of the revenue from the contracts, the big contracts that we have?
It's a part of line seven, and it's a combination of some, yes, correct.
Of what? Other revenue.
Other revenue sources, line seven.
Is that 15 million?
Not, one contract isn't 15, but the combination of like 15 to 20 different sources, which do include some of those adjustments that you're highlighting.
So I understand that. So between the 7% rate increase that you're forecasting or protecting or you're asking, and then the other revenue source increase of 15 million, you're looking at $25 million increase in revenue?
No, because the other revenue sources is a part of your regular and organic revenue base. So if you see the year before, that number was 14 million or 13.9. If we're looking at the increase, then we'll say it's increasing at about 1.5 million.
It's not new money, Mo. It's not new money, it's not new money.
I'm just trying to understand what, you know, the ratio of revenue increase. So you're still looking at, so the increase that you're generating is really the increase that we're doing on the rates period?
Yeah, you got a 1% increase in revenues.
Essentially, but there are other smaller increases that we do consider as you're highlighting. Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Robert, can you match this slide with the CIP number? I just want to make sure we're being clear for Mr. Bond. You added the water and the sewer together to get to 80 million?
Yes, ma'am.
But was the 25.5 for the water and the 54?
Yes, ma'am.
2.5 for the wastewater?
Yes, ma'am. And in the following years?
This 120 then goes back to 18.4. So it's the same split.
One more question, just to follow up on the previous question when it comes to bonds. How many, how much outstanding bonds do we have in water and sewer so far, as of today?
I, I can't tell you right now off the top of my head, but we could go about finding out what that number is.
FA knows. FA is sitting right there. How much we got outstanding, Brad?
How many?
He'll tell you, he'll tell you.
We got, you should know that off the top of your head.
550 million? So 550 million already as of today, and we're gonna pile up another 500 million in the next five years?
It's not piling up, it's investing in our system.
I understand, I, okay, I mean, add in, into the investment, right?
Historically low cost of capital.
You know.
Total cost to get us where we need to go.
Yeah, and at the beginning of this presentation, you heard the importance and staff stressing the requirements, some of which had regulatory implications, level of service implications. So I understand what you're saying, but these items are also driving the program as a whole, and all we're trying to do is appropriately fund the program in a sustainable manner at the lowest potential.
I understand the number, that's all.
No problem. So looking at the financial plan, I'm going to step away from the mic so that I can.
I won't touch the screen. So in FYO '20, as we said, we're.
You should turn the mic around, Robert, just turn the mic around towards you, turn the mic towards you at least, maybe it might catch a little more.
Okay. In FYO '20, total service revenues, line three, are estimated to be about 141.7. We're planning a 7.06% increase, along with the other revenue sources, which will grow, which will produce about 167 million in revenues, that's line 11. That total revenue number over the forecast period with the projected increases, a 9.17 in '21, a 9.01 in '22, a 7.92 in '23, and a 5.98 in '24, along with the steady adjustments to the other revenue services, will produce revenues in the amount of about 231 by FYO '24. Now, looking at cost and how cost will grow over the same period, in line 12, we have O&amp;M, operating expenses, which starts at about 92.3 million in '20, as we highlighted previously, and that number will grow to 107.9 by '24. So that's the first component of cost growing. The next component then becomes debt service. So we have existing debt service, which will, you know, which has leveled off currently at about 37.5, but then the incremental requirements to fund our program, the capital projects and the capital program, with that mix of about 30, 33% cash, the rest debt, you know, we'll see debt service, incremental debt service increasing to about 23.4.
What's our debt service rate? Or bond?
The current market, the current market rate?
Can you just throw me a ballpark average? Four and a quarter?
We did better than that on the, on the stormwater bonds, didn't we? Three, 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 3.8? I don't know why the number's in my head. Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, I apologize. Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, I apologize.
Along those lines, my, my question is, and this may be brought up more for Brent, but do, do we need to ma- maintain a, a, a two point oh coverage? And the reason I ask is, is I'm looking at, you know, at the end of five years, we're gonna be roughly somewhere at a billion bucks. I'm wondering if we could excel payment by lowering our coverage and putting more cash into the system and lowering our cost structure in the future.
It's a fair question that the-
And I know you don't have to answer it, but just process of, you know, something we ought to be thinking about.
Sure, and, and the, the quick answer is why we target two times coverage, why we target a certain percentage of liquidity, liquidity for, for the current, for the current lending. We're targeting off of what the current criteria is with the rate, with our double A rate.
Okay.
As a target, we don't always hit it. We have a particularly wet quarter of the year, and rather than it going down, we may not actually hit the two times coverage, but the point is that-
Gives you that cushion.
Gives us the cushion that stands within that bandwidth of double A rating, and that's what I call the funds that stay.
So on a case-to-case basis yearly, could we look at adding more cash or making additional payment? I mean, my eyes is we need to accelerate our debt service.
I mean, the two easiest sources of funding are either gonna be from some debt component or cash, and to the extent that-
We have excess.
The availability of cash is there without eroding liquidity and without eroding coverage in any given year. Always better to have more cash in there as an increase of paygo component of the capital. Because that helps to deleverage the system as well, you know, like that.
So as we, as we move forward and, and are we looking at that on a yearly basis and trying to make a judgment call? I think it'd be good for us to, to, to have kind of a, a work session on a yearly basis down that road as we go there and look at that and understand that, because I think it's very important for constituents, customer base to understand what we're doing, but also showing that, you know, we're, we're looking ahead, not just reacting, we're planning to.
And didn't we a few years ago, did we, did we drop our debt service coverage ratio a few years back?
I thought we did.
I think, I think, and we, and, and with the intention of bumping it back up. And you were gonna say before I ask my next question?
Yes, sir. So one thing to add to that statement, absolutely, you know, it's an option. But the other side to that puzzle is, the more you drive cash funding potentially, the more the risk and the burden then becomes to the customer, because it's a direct impact from your rates.
I'm talking about on the backside, not on the front side.
But even on, on, on the entire value chain-
Right.
For example, even if you do it on the backside, the revenues come out, come through on the front side and then fall out. So today or tomorrow, you know, some impacts. So that becomes the exercise we all go through every year of trying to see how best to create that least potential impact. I'm sorry.
You're putting the debt burden all on the current customers, you're spreading it out to future customers too, to let them share them.
Yeah, we're spreading it across the, the requirements of the entire system, I'm sorry.
They're sharing the improvements and the better quality service.
Yeah, but they all still need to be sharing the debt service to put that infrastructure under.
That's why you don't transfer.
At least from my perspective, going through this exercise every year. That's us, them informed of how we, what we're doing and what the, what the expectations are. We'll know how, where we stand.
I think, I think, I think as much participation as we can get from the public, as much transparency, just putting the information out. I think we got a whole lot to be thankful for, proud of here, some good leadership, good. I think, I think we're, we're handling the public trust very well. It's our job to make sure we push as much information out so people can digest this and, and particularly in layman's terms. I think, Mo, can you get another question?
I, I question on the operating expenses. It looks like your operating expenses is going up steady, the same or the same stream of percentage increase as the revenue. And I, you know, in one way I don't understand that, because eventually your expenses is not gonna equal the same amount of increases of revenue, but as a different, but going back to what we were talking about, the meter readers and how some of that department or some of that staffing is even decreasing. Have we calculated or even considered maybe some of that expenses and operating expenses that could be eliminated or decreased somehow? I mean, you can't, I mean, eventually in five years, we won't have meter readers.
Okay, so let me, two, two parts, let me take the first part of that question. So O and M, operating expenses are going up at about four percent. And yes, you have two components of revenues and they're not going up or increasing at the same rate. Yes, the other revenue sources?
Are going up at a rate that may be, you know, around or somewhere close to the rate of O and M. And that's fine, because you think about the services and what they are, in some cases you can make an argument or a case, which we do.
In some cases I can make the same argument, okay.
Maybe just, but the second and, and bigger component of your revenue base is the user rate revenues. And you see we have the increases coming in, so you're absolutely right. If these dollars go up, you're absolutely right, if they go up at the same rate as O and M, yeah, we won't be able to make our requirements. And that's why it's so tough to go about establishing what these increases need to be on an annual basis. Because as you can see, they're greater than that four percent to support your case. And that's the reason why these revenue increases annually are at the level they are.
But my other argument is, at, at, at one point, your operating expenses since it have to become at a, at almost an evil level, because the economics part of it, you, your constant expense is almost the same. Especially if you're, if, especially if you're losing a department where the meter readers are not gonna exist in five years.
So that's called indexing. And in various utilities across the country, you have an index, a cost index, that you agree upon. Stakeholders, the council, staff, all the shareholders, stakeholders agree upon. And that index, you utilize to increase rates and increase costs in, 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 in some cases. Now, that's in a, in a, in a perfect world, a utility that's steady, a utility that may not always have significant growth. You know, you are in a, you are in an environment where your, your, your local economy is fluid. You have a lot of development, you have a lot of movement, you know, you have a lot of projects. So I'm not going to say-
Drink a lot of water, we don't drink a lot of soda, is that what you're saying?
But that's a good, that's a good thing, you know? So from a community perspective, I don't know if I would say indexing would be for you, we would have to look at it. But that also is a part of the reason why you have the increases you have, and the reason why you're not going to have one rate that can be applied to your rates and your costs. Because your costs aren't going up, you have different movements on an annual basis, and we have to account for the movements, and while accounting for that movement, still try to develop a rate that's the lowest potential impact for your customers, and then meet our financial requirements so that you can maintain your bond rating and get a low cost of borrowing when you go to market next.
It's kinda like when the lettuce market goes to man.
Restaurant, tour tour? Okay, okay.
We're getting ready to do a complete system-wide change in meters. And from years ago, when we had several cities in South Carolina completely changed that, their meters, they saw twenty, twenty-five percent increase in metered water. Did you give us any credit for the hundred forty-five thousand meters you changed in there?
Councilman, the last time we were here, you asked that question and I'll defer to-
One thing I wanna add, and, and these are very good points that both of y'all made up.
Seriously?
Yes, but this is just all projections going forward. This is why we update the rate study each year, so we take the actuals and then move forward with that. Because the actuals may affect revenues and may affect expenses. So by the time we get out here, you know, when we're rolling out here in twenty twenty-three, I'll be shocked if these numbers are right on. Sorry, that's just reality, which is why we will do this update each year as we go through this, so that when you're actually voting on this number here, not any of these, and you're voting on that number there, we're actually using our most recent data that we have, so that we have a fairly accurate number rolling into that year. Next year, we're gonna be sitting here, we will have done the same rate study, so we will update those numbers, so that when you're voting for twenty twenty-one, we'll have real data, not just some estimates that we had from two years ago.
Well, since we are voting on the seven point oh six percent increase, I, I think since we're taking a little break to catch up on some of the CIP projects and some of the things, maybe we should take a little break to catch up on the increased rates and not-
You can't, you can't.
The other thing is, and I, I, I thought it, but I didn't say it, if you look back at the trends, can you go back to that, Robert?
Yes, ma'am.
Because this council chose two years not to do any increase, if you look at the, the numbers, that nine and a half, that nine point seven that we did this year could have been lower had we kept with the-
I mean, you can't really predict that, because you never know what happens that, that year, what industry, what time tracks.
But we had a rate study, just like we do now, that-
But costs don't change, Mo, that's the problem. It's, it's just like any business, the problem is, is the system did not take over the twenty years the increases on an annual basis that it should have, and so it was ca, it basically did not fund the system, because we kept putting off the major things, because nobody wanted to do an increase. It is almost imperative that you do an increase every year to manage the increase of the costs of the system and everything. I think when we get to the end of this dissent decreeing everywhere, you're gonna see things kinda level, level out, but you're still gonna have an increase, it's not gonna decrease, it's impossible to decrease.
You're absolutely right, Councilman Devine, absolutely right. If you put it off, yeah, you may put it off today, but you'll have to pay for it somehow tomorrow.
You gotta judge constituents, you just blame it on Bob.
Same, you gotta take that back, I say the same.
Okay, so going to the billing packs. Looking at the billing packs, your typical or average usage is about six thousand gallons per month. So we're talking about a, a, an increase of about four dollars and twenty-six cents for the typical customer.
You have not seen my bill, Robert, you know, when we talk about this, we need to talk about bills.
Twenty-one dollars enough, I missed that, I used to have that.
Robert, keep on going.
Okay. Just, you know, a comparison as it relates to your typical bill with some neighboring utilities. You know, on the water side, you are, you are at the lower end of the middle, not at the lower end, but meaning not at the lower end of the group, but you're, you know, somewhere in the lower end of the middle.
So this, this increase, proposed increase doesn't even change our position on the list?
Correct, that's the, that's the bigger point, a little bit, but relatively it's about the same.
What was that coming up on this?
It does it, well, I guess it might, it might.
A little bit.
Yeah, it'll take us behind the rock hill, but.
By fifty percent, by fifty percent?
But yeah.
Where is West Columbia? Why can't y'all ever compare West Columbia?
I, I apologize, and we'll, we'll have it, we, we, we do have it in our analysis, but I can't tell you why it's not here, but we will the next time, sorry about that.
They ran out of running on the-
Sorry about that.
They're right, how lower their rates are than ours.
Okay, wastewater?
They see ten dollars more.
West Columbia, appreciate their wastewater.
Yeah, wa, wastewater, wastewater? So you're at about, you know, the middle of the pack, or somewhere thereabouts on the wastewater side. Okay? That's it, thank you very much. Do you all have any questions?
The church has its house, it's a non-tax paying, he's tapping somebody else's.
Thanks again, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, everyone.
Is that for your stormwater?
Alright.
It's a hundred something dollars a month.
This plug doesn't work, and that one doesn't, that one doesn't. On the end.
Reese, ready for executive session?
One in the middle?
Oh, Missy, I'm sorry, Missy.
This is a conversational.
Take her off, Robert.
And one in the middle, I think it's this one?
Taken off and then re-added?
Yeah, okay.
This is on the other one.
Do you want a hard copy?
Please.
Yeah, you know I like paper.
I do. We all just love it, don't we?
Great job.
I'm surprised how much of that I've thrown out in the last two weeks.
Missy is going to, pretty quickly.
Very quickly.
Bye.
So while, while Ms. Moore is loading me, loading up this presentation, the information we're presenting really is the, is not anything additional or new, different numbers than what you've already seen presented to you already. So it's just a matter of presenting it in a little bit different fashion, a little higher level. And it will mimic what we are presenting in the, ultimately what we end up presenting in the public hearing. So you have a hard copy of the presentation, it should follow along with what was in the memo that was attached to the agenda from the city manager's proposed budget for F one nineteen twenty for both water and sewer fund and for the stormwater fund. So the first information is that the F one nineteen twenty water and sewer operating budget is proposed at one hundred and sixty-seven million. It's an increase of five point two or three point two percent, three, five point two million, three point two percent increase. That is the number with the rate adjustments that Roberts just talked to you about, so it includes the seven point zero six percent rate increase. Revenue increase is applied, of course, to the water and sewer system, and those revenues go towards the operations, capital obligations, and the debt, the debt service that has been discussed. So I'm gonna skip ahead, I'm gonna skip to slide four, which is the operating budget. Overall, the total budget of the hundred and sixty-seven million, operational departments make up about fifty-eight percent of the budget, and then debt service is another twenty-three percent. And capital, transferred to the capital improvement program makes up eleven. Then other transfers out, reserves, another non-departmental, combined make up nine percent of the total budget. Out of the department's budgets, utilities makes up sixty-nine percent, and engineering makes up thirteen percent. Those are the two largest budgets, of course, in the water and sewer operating fund. Utilities makes up the, the plant, includes both the plants as well as the treatment operations. Any questions about the-
So when you, on the department budgets, so economic development's one percent of the one sixty-seven?
No, the department budget's total ni- ninety-three million. So economic development is one percent of the ninety-three. So the, the, the chart on the left is the total budget, and that shows the combined of everything.
But it doesn't have a number on it, so that's why I'm asking. So what's the total budget number, one sixty-seven, what?
The total budget number is one sixty-seven, but the ta, but the pie chart on the right that represents just what makes up departments, that's the ninety-three million. Or is it, yeah, ninety-three point four? No, actually it's ninety-five, yeah. So right, thank you, Erica. So the, the chart on the left, it just represents operating departments, I mean, the, the operating departments in, in, or department budgets, I should say. So that would include, that, that is not inclusive of debt service, is not inclusive of transfers.
So the total's one sixty-seven, out of the one sixty-seven, ninety-five goes to departments and then-
Correct, thank you.
Remind me, because I can't remember, hydrant, fire hydrant maintenance, is that based on revenue coming in off the tax bill or is that added charge?
The hy, the department?
One percent hydrant fee.
The revenue is a, is a additional fee on top of it, it's a separate.
Yeah, it comes in, it's not taken out, I mean, we're bringing it in as revenue, right?
Right, right, that's not reflected, those, those revenues are not reflected here. This is just a, the next ta, next slide is just expenditures broken out, showing tabularly, it's also the budget that was attached to your memo. Department budgets, showing the entire hundred and sixty-seven million broken out by the different departments and divisions. With regards to the Water and Sewer Operating Budgets, again, just to reiterate, a total budget of one hundred and sixty-seven million. The operating budget's total ninety-three point three. That's ju- that's the operating departments that we mentioned before. It's an increase of seven hundred and seventy-five or less than one percent. Some of the challenges staff-wise has been related to hiring of CDLs and maintaining of CDL driver, employees with a CDL driver's license. So that's been a, a real focus on this year across, not just within the utilities, but also in the public works and other areas that have those drivers.
Whole economy.
Right, exactly. So we compete across those levels. Of course, the continuation of customer service focus. The biggest focus, too, is on the automated meter and infrastructure installation and project. That's actually touches on multiple departments across the city. Everywhere from finance to customer service, IT, utilities, my office, a couple of different areas. So it's a, it is a major initiative and by far one of the largest activities going on citywide right now. It's very significant. The budget does reflect a cost of living adjustment that's proposed at this point. Assuming a two percent, right. And department budgets do also reflect increases for state retirement system, another one percent increase on state retirement, increase rate, or state retirement rates. But healthcare is proposed at current rate levels this early in the process of change. Over to the state, state plan. Continuing on with Water and Sewer Operating, the CIP, as already mentioned, is eighty million. Water is twenty-five point five million, and wastewater is fifty-four point four. The budget does include the seventeen point five million dollars in cash that she used to help fund the Water and Sewer CIP for next fiscal year. The remainder comes, of course, from bonds and, and fund balance. Debt services budget at thirty-seven point five million, which is an increase of two point three or six point five percent increase. And then we'd budget cash also, as Robert discussed with you in the financial plan. There is a, also reflecting of eight point seven in cash that reserve that's budgeted. Transfers out total set twenty-four point three. That's inclusive of the seventeen point five transfer to CIP. It's an overall decrease in transfers of three point five due to the, not as much cash needed to transfer to the CIP. It does include the indirect cost allocation to the general fund is maintained at current year levels of four point one. That's the same rate it has been for three years. This will be the third year of that rate. All right. If any, no other questions, we'll move on to stormwater.
Just as a point of interest, do you remember what the average increase in the health plan was prior to this year?
Well, in terms of what we charged to department rates, six to seven, eight percent, maybe ten percent of the rates, but at the end of the year, by the time the actual charges hit, it was more than that.
Transfer that into a dollar amount?
We can. I can off the top of my head, but yes. Probably last year when we were talking about healthcare all the time, yes, but at this moment, no.
It'd be interesting to know that we don't have to budget for a six million or ten million dollar increase because we've maintained that yet.
Right. So we, we did maintain, we, the budget that ended up being passed reflected a rate of ten thousand five hundred per employee. So that's the same rate that's reflected in the current year. It's too soon in the transfer to the state plan to be able to make any other adjustments, but we predict by next year, we will be, begin to make some adjustments. Okay, so stormwater revenues are, I mean, there's a small portion of revenues that come in from other, other fees, revenues which are for inspections and reviews, otherwise the stormwater fee. Oh, I'm sorry. The total budget for stormwater is fourteen million three seventy. Normally put that on there, don't I?
That's all bonding?
No, sir. To the, to the right, you can see that thirty, thirty percent of the budget is public works. Engineering makes up twenty-three percent.
Where, but what's the revenue coming in? There's no revenue line.
It says stormwater fee.
Stormwater fee on the chart.
Right, but it doesn't, there's no dollar amount.
Yeah, that's what she said.
It's fourteen million three hundred and seventy thousand. If you, on the bud- budget memo that was attached, there was a budget summary that include, includes the revenues.
So it goes to nil at the end of the year?
We always bal- thus, we, we present you a balanced budget. Or we start, we, here, here we're able to present you a balanced budget.
So I guess my, my question on the proposed budget, or at least a question I have, and you don't have to bring it today, is, is, you know, there's six million dollars of that budget's engineering. That seems awfully high to me.
Six million?
Yeah, you got engineering services for, for two point nine, and then you got engineering for three point one.
Those, those two numbers, actually, those, the, the three point one is a total of two point nine and one hundred and eighty-seven. Those are the two divisions that make up engineering. I just didn't collapse those.
The three point one eight five is a subtotal.
Right.
There should be a line in there.
The, right, or collapse and just show engineering come, all of those. Those are the two divisions within engineering that are charged to stormwater, engineering services.
Very clear.
I know, and I didn't make that very clear, did I?
Are there any grants that we receive as part of revenue for storm drains or anything like that?
We've issued a grant match, but we have, well, some of our FEMA's grants are, are assisting our stormwater system, but I can't think of any specific grants recently.
We, we add that, how do you treat the FEMA grants?
No, the grant, those aren't reflected here. We've used FEMA grants to purchase things. Those assets become part of the stormwater system. They don't help offset the budget. Grants are not going to offset the budget here.
What, what do you?
No.
I'm sorry, just what, what do you show it?
They don't show here. They don't show here. No. Grants are not reflected.
I'm making sure to, y'all, we be conscious of time as we added an item.
Yeah, I gotta leave in five fifteen before period.
We short.
Right. So I'll just go ahead and skip on over. Again, the, so the total budget for stormwater is fourteen point three million dollars, an increase of ninety-three or six point seven percent over the current year. It does reflect the continuation of the rate adjustments that were adopted by City Council in two thousand and seventeen. So the stormwater fee will increase seventy-eight cents per month. It will increase from twelve dollars and fifty-four cents to thirteen dollars and thirty-two cents per month. It's about a nine dollar increase per year? For the year. It's a, it's a seventy-eight cents increase per month.
But if you'd like to donate the other eight dollars in change, yeah, you will. It's called HOA fee, Howard. You might be moving into a building, you're still paying for it. That means we need to reassess the taxes over there. Is that cheap?
I don't know. I've been answering a lot of questions.
That's a perfect audit building to start with.
I've been asking a lot of questions about stormwater.
You guys, you guys are so, so easily distracted.
Come on, guys.
But those of us who have small children, you guys amaze me.
All right. The CIP for nineteen twenty is thirty point five million. We will have a CIP for you with the budget, with the final budget presentations. It does include using one point seven million in fund ba- in, in budgeted cash from the stormwater budget. The total CIP is ninety-six over the five years. That was, that was the basis for the rate adjustments two years ago. And again, these budgets also do reflect cost of living, of course, just for the employees that are for, part of the stormwater program. Lastly, unless there's any, any other questions about the stormwater but proposed budget?
So, Missy won't go too far. What we wanted to do, the item is on the executive session agenda, but I do feel like there's some need to discuss it in the work session as well, hence adding the revenue options for, as we continue with budget discussions. I don't think there's any secret. There has been discussions for multiple budget years by this manager regarding the strains on the general fund. And so our council, and the seated council in particular, has been gracious and helpful with no tax increases, but also allowing the staff and myself to try to be as creative as possible with what we've been able to do, particularly when it comes to public safety and public works, and always maintaining this beautiful capital city and the posture that it should be and what our citizens deserve. A real testament to that, I think, is during the NCAA tournament. I, I mean, I just heard such positive reflection on our city from visitors and the recent Go Red Day for teachers with all of those wonderful educators in our capital city. So with that said, I think we have come to a point in time, though, where there has to be some discussion of revenue generating options in order to sustain the growth, the phenomenal growth we're seeing, and the ability for city services to be maintained as they should be. We wanted to do a presentation openly to begin that discussion, and so the public also knows that this is certainly of concern with some options that I think council would potentially support some, maybe not others, but again, just putting the alternatives out in the open. And then, of course, there would be some legal background and additional discussion of each of these options that the city attorney would discuss with you all in executive session. But this is, this part of the discussion is, is open, and if you're up for it, we'll go through these alternatives pretty quickly. And, and also lead into laying the foundation for some of the general fund items in particular, like public safety and others that are necessary for us to consider increasing funding.
Okay, all right. This will be a, a joint conversation, or a, so you don't have to hear just my voice. Robert's voice. So discussion outline, we want to be able to restate sort of the sta- statement of, of the issues. It's by far not an oversimplification of the issues or the problems, but showing, showing starting point from what we're looking at. The council direction that we feel like we were originally given. Some background information, again, just to sort of establish the, the landscape from which we are working from and looking at information that we have for you on parcel information in terms of what our parcel data looks like, our tax ba- database looks like. Some information on business license information, and then, of course, our options. We want to start out with our disstatement of the issues. And primary is that the number of non-tox, non-tax, non-taxpaying entities located in Colombia disproportionately shift the tax burden of taxable entries, entities and residents and commercial taxpayers, shift the share, their share of the burden of the property taxes, yet all entities, including non-tax entities, receiving the same share of services and benefits being located in the city limits. Our current millage is ninety-eight point one percent. That represents less than twenty percent of a, of a property tax bill. So your total tax bill, only twenty percent of it represents the city's millage. Property taxes currently generate about fifty-seven million in revenues for the general fund, which represent forty-four percent. We also receive an additional eleven point eight from the fire rebate millage that is set by the county. Public safety functions account for almost fifty percent of our total budget in the general fund alone. Personnel costs account for sixty-four percent of the personnel budget. The general fund budget is a service industry. So, of course, those operating costs, those budgets are going to be primarily made up of personnel. As we've mentioned, even if we were to maintain salaries flat, our other increases of fringes, state retirement, healthcare, ta- other, other charges related to fringes go up annually. And some of those are percentage based on salary. So if we, as we do also adjust salary increases, make a cost, whether it be cost of living or merits, those also adjust. We have, we have limitations on, by state law in terms of what we can do to generate our revenues, both by setting those fees and even limits on what we can raise in terms of property taxes. So what, some of the questions we are faced with is what options are there for increasing the city's overall set, property values in order to increase revenue off of the existing millage rates? How can the city increase property values or add to the overall tax base? How does the city generate revenues that covers the cost of operations and prepare the city for growth? And back to the original statement, and that is, how do we help distribute that burden of the taxes that we, that, that taxpayers bear across all entities that benefit from the services that the city generates?
Is it fair to say, I mean, unless, this is some direction from Teresa Knox, nonprofits and governmental entities?
We're, we're inclusive of all. We'll have a breakdown of what everything makes up, non-tax entities.
It's, it's three point four billion dollars that is, that is not contributing in some form or another. And that's not all of it. That's just a straight non-taxpaying entities. So, you know, I think the discussion needs to be around, number one is that we ought to be doing two things. We need to audit all of these and make sure that they're still correct because there's some substantial numbers in here. There's sixty-eight million dollars of, of tax exempt homes alone.
Is that tax exempt for what, homestead or what?
Well, the, there, there's two properties, just by looking through the list, that we know aren't. You know, so when's the last time things got assessed? You know, going through and looking at...
Let's talk over that, though. Was that through the treasury office or the auditor?
The county, but I think for our purposes, because this is just city, that, that we ought to have a private auditor look into these, all of these entities as well. As we've had discussions about certain facilities here in town that are doing a lot of private business, but are under the cloth of, of non-taxpaying entity. And we, we gotta have a, a full discussion about how you con- how you condo that out. You just, you can't have a space that's doing multiple events and everything else and competing against the private sector and not having to pay its share of property tax. That's, that is not, that's not what the, the law was set up to be.
It's, no, I couldn't agree more. It says we articulate the problem, if government entities, obviously some don't receive the same share services, actually probably receive more, more services than some of our taxpayers do. Also, in the second bullet point, I think it's also fair to reference the fact that, that millage rate has still, stood still for a decade or more, so representing a, a decreasing portion of the taxpayers' total bill. Because, I mean, because again, because we're speaking to ourselves, we're, we're, we're laying out the, the statement.
Higher education's a billion, billion dollars worth of property.
We're laying out the statement of the case, but, but, but the discussion needs to be forward-facing to our citizens and making sure that they understand the totality of what, of what we're dealing with.
Absolutely. And attitude, I mean, and not even just beyond the past ten years. I mean, the city historically has not had a, does not raise taxes regularly.
If we adjusted accordingly, we, I think we're down with one hundred and three mils, hundred and...
We were as high as a hundred and six at...
Hundred and six, hundred and six mils, I'm sorry.
At one point.
Down eight mils. Someone, someone challenged me on that.
Through reassessment.
I, I think, I think the, the real key part of this...
One hundred and six point one mils is where we're at. We're down from one hundred and six point one mils.
Right, we're at ninety-eight point five. We're like ninety-eight point five. I think the real discussion here is that we have to look at how to equalize or balance the services that we're giving along everybody. The, the homeowners, the taxpayers who are paying, commercial guys paying six percent, they're all paying their fair share and then some. And with the amount of properties, it's thirty-four hundred parcels roughly, and that includes us in that. So, you know, we have to, we have to balance that out. But when you look at the cost structure and the value and how much it is, and the, you identify the costs of that, I think we have to look at, at, at multiple options. And it's not just, there's not a silver bullet here, but we can't continue to move forward. We have to be competitive. We have to be competitive in, in our public safety, which includes fire, police, public works. We have not, we have to continue to, you know, fund with our increased growth in our other departments. If that's IT, you know, our other needs. And we're constantly, we're, we're not being able to be competitive there. We're not be able to, to deliver the quality of services. And every increase we have in water and everything only affects those parcels in here by a very small margin. They don't want to come close. And I think somehow we gotta build that balance so that everybody is equally invested at, at some level to the quality of service. Cause there's nobody in here, I don't care what entity they are, that not getting serviced. You know, somebody-
Everybody benefits from-
Well, they are, I mean, you-
We've done, we've done, we've done more with less. We've done more with less and, but at some point it reaches a breaking point. And, and our citizens deserve our very best, so um.
But I think to, to, to move forward in that, we, I think we need to do, do a complete audit and understand.
Sure.
And I think we need to get the complete list from the auditor that include the partial taxpaying entities as well. And I know that, I think Jeff was already working on, on an audit on business license. Cause we already know that some of that is falling on the wayside with, with some of the nonprofits. And so I think we gotta look at it all the way across the board. I saw one of the tax exempted properties in here was, was the railroad. You know, and I think it's time, that was one of the discussions we wanted to have in Washington. You know, they're, they're having a massive increase and we're, we're paying, we're paying the price for it, so.
We'll address all of this in this-
Just let her finish.
A little here and there. I don't want to stop the discussion, but I just want to make sure y'all have enough time.
Roll that beautiful bean footage.
So we also wanted to make sure we were rea- restating city council's original direction. And that was to charge a fee to all non-tax entities. Churches will be exempted. The statements were made, we're not saying these are across the board or everybody's agreements. What we're stating are, in, what we were, what we were instructed, whether it be by one or multiple. Churches would be exempt with exception of any business or non-religious type activities.
We, we're able to kind of define that?
Yeah.
Their, business license folks, I think, have some ways of doing that. And there are, I mean, we'll, we'll find out some more information if we talk through. Just for, again, visual purposes, this is the current year budget. This is not your proposed nineteen-twenty general fund budget. A lot of it will be shaped by what's discussed today. So again, property taxes make up about thirty-nine percent. Business license impairments make up twenty-eight. Public safety on, on the revenue side, expenditure wise, public safety is represented here twenty, at forty-seven percent. That's just, just a, in, background information to have. This also is a list of our final assessment values for the past twenty years. So you can see our um total assessment, our, our real, our real property assessed values total, including both personal and um real pr- real estate, is five hundred and sixty-five million. And you can see where there have been fluctuations in those numbers going through several years, um as well as reassessments. You can see we've dipped, um, it's fluctuated quite a bit over the past five years, but we have had a ten percent increase in the last five years. So increase of fifty-four million. It wasn't quite the boon that it was ten years ago, but that was probably not in relation to actual tax values as much as it is adjustments to the markets at that time, but. Oh, here's millage.
What's the, um, what do, what's the difference between seventeen and eighteen?
The difference alone.
Yeah, I mean, what do we attribute to that? I mean, that's a-
The six point nine, the difference going from eighteen million to six point nine.
Just the increase.
No, the, the assessment, I'm just, yeah. The percentage of the, yeah, assessed values, I'm just wondering if there's something really big that came along?
Trying to remember if something came back online that was offline.
Two thousand, you're talking two thousand and nine, what are you talking about?
Yes, the two thousand and eighteen, the fiscal year eighteen, two thousand and seventeen. Yeah, it seems like if there was a, a piece of property that came back off, I can't remember, I have to look.
The hub, the hub, the hub?
Oh, maybe the hub?
The hub, the hub, the hub, the hub, the hub had been depressed significantly. It may have been something else too. But, but the hub, the hub assessment, that building uh on the, on the fourteen-hundred block had been reassessed and had been dropped significantly. And now it's back up according to our cap or it's a top five. It was empty. It was empty, now it's a top five taxpayer again, maybe top two or three. And I don't know about if any of the other um student housing might have come online too. Then, but the hub would be in there somewhere. When was that, miss, when was, what's parking revenues go, go?
Uh, as far as, this is just a, a graphic, another graphic displaying the final assessment values along with the millage rate, as the mayor's pointed out, that our millage rate is the same now as it was in two thousand and nine. And since that time, we have gone through at least two, one reassessment, maybe two.
What's the millage rate value increase over that ten-year period?
Less than a hundred thousand per ba- per, yeah, less than a hundred thousand. Jeff is getting ready to do the math on that one.
Cut the leg and stew out.
Average of ten thousand dollars a year.
About a hundred thousand. Again, that's one of the set, you know, the attributes that we're trying to address, we need to address rather. So here's, we're getting into the meat of everything, our non-tax parcels. There are forty-six thousand one hundred and one total parcels. This is, represents the Richland County's portion. So there are some adjustments, of course, for, we included Lexington County. Four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven non-tax parcels, about ten percent of the total. When you look at it from the perspective of the market value though, twelve point eight billion in total um market value with a taxable value of eight point six billion. The estimated, estimated, because again, these are non-tax parcels, so I don't think the assessments are maintained as, as often. And looking over here are our folks that have formerly worked in tax assessment, um.
So Missy, that four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven parcels corresponds directly to the seventy-six point five percent or the lower number, thirty-six percent uh, uh, of total area? What does that correspond to?
This relates to the actual parcels. Then there's also the land values. And then there's also percentages, you can see seventy-three percent of our market value. You're getting to the thirty percent that, that's often-
I'm just trying to figure out, cause nine point three point nine percent doesn't sound like a lot. What does it mean, what does it mean in terms of area?
If you look at it in terms of total market value-
No, this is us, this is, these are county parcels that are within our municipal limits.
Like I said, this will be a joint conversation, so.
We've had several studies out there, ship breaking out taxes, they have several different ways. This one's just parcels. I think we rounded it up in the past when you said ten percent, nine point three, that's just parcels. But of those parcels, the total acreage, I think that was broken out in acreage, acreage. Including Fort Jackson, it was closer to seventy-seven.
Right.
And if you break it out by true value of properties, assuming the value that's out there, it's closer to about thirty, thirty-
Go to slide five, there'll be a-
This is the money slide, yeah.
I guess, I mean, let me-
We, we do have the devalue, we do have the acreage values we can get for you.
Parcels versus uh structures?
Acreage, yes.
The acreage.
We don't have structures.
You don't have values of structures.
We have total values.
Market values.
But that's inclusive of the, yeah. So here is a breakout of what makes up those four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven non-tax parcels.
So that's what Daniel's talking about, homeowner, homestead?
We combine homeowner and homestead. Homeowner reflects disabled, reflects veterans, which includes military as well as police and fire veterans. It includes blind. Well, I, actually, percentage wise, churches make up eighteen. So that combined homestead and homeowner is thirty, thirty percent, and then churches will be eighteen. Next to that would be the city of Columbia at twelve percent, and then Columbia Housing Authority at ten.
But, but in fairness, that's by, that's how many parcels not by dollar value.
It's parcels. Dollar value was, we didn't-
That's the question I was, I was getting at, yeah.
Right. Yeah, we did not do the percentage on the dollar values. We could add that.
Go back and do the home, homeowner, homestead, if, if you're getting the homeowner exemption.
It should be only, it only should be a, a set dollar amount. And that's, the question is, is, is how, has all that been calculated? Have properties passed hands and still not paying? Because to me, I mean, when I looked at just our short sheet, which is a little less than that, I mean, four hundred and thirty-five parcels that were just the homeowners. I mean, that's, that's, that's close to seventy million dollars. That's an average of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand of, of parcel, which I just-
Depends on the value of the-
Yeah, there, there's a lot of factors, that's why we have to get into details, but-
We have disabled veterans at a hundred percent that don't pay taxes. They might have a very nice home.
Yeah. We don't know that.
Hard for me to believe that they don't do it when it changes hands. Cause I know folks that it changes hands and automatically they're getting a notice.
I tell you, let's, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, so I was just saying, I, I think we do need to get an audit, but I wouldn't get our hopes up that it's a-
Most, most of the questions I've, most of the questions I've had, and I think most of us have had, Missy, has kind of addressed on subsequent slides. So let's hurry up and get through the presentation, then we'll ask some more questions at the end.
So just, this is, the same information is just collapsing some of the categories. So government makes up thirty-two percent. That's collective of state, city, county, special purpose districts, schools. True nonprofit agencies are about ten percent. Higher education's eight. Medical is two. Which that's just going to be probably the hospitals, maybe not.
And that's an area.
That's parcels.
These, these are parcels, isn't it?
We didn't do areas. We don't have areas, and we have it, we don't have any of this information. Then now it's just a matter of showing graphically what this information looks like. So this is the entire city limits. This map shows you our taxable land. Here is taxable land minus our right of ways. Taxable land versus tax exempt. Of course, a big chunk of that is Fort Jackson and then um Harbison, SLED, DJJ. Yeah.
So that's Harbison over there.
Sesquie. Sesquie.
Sesquie, okay, yeah.
No, it's Markwood Golf Club. Is that Midlands? No, that might be the health, mental health, isn't it?
There's the mental health on the other side.
What, on Bear Road?
Yeah. Looks like it, because I- seventy-seven's running up beside it.
That's right.
So here's our just tax exempted properties. So as you can see, the tax exempt makes up a number of different entities in various different proportions regarding as far as it goes by parcels. We also wanted to point out business license information because it's important when we get into options that are being discussed. Ten thousand and sixty business licenses issued in two thousand and eighteen. Five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two are businesses that are located in city limits. Three thousand eight hundred and one are businesses that are not located in the city but do business in the city. Of those, two hundred and sixty-seven are nonprofit and are fee exempt. So they have a business license, but they're, they have a, they are exempted a fee. And now that, that two hundred and sixty-seven, approximately one hundred and seven is not exact number. Our, our medical services, physicians' offices, hospitals, which would have been those doctors' offices that are now bought by the hospitals.
What's the value on that?
We do not have that value.
The one oh seven includes those?
Those numbers, one oh seven is inclusive of, of the ten thousand. And it's included, inclusive of the, it's inclusive of the two hundred and sixty-seven, yes.
What we need is the form of-
We don't have it.
We need to get the form of business license paid by those one hundred and seven before they were gumbled up into the hospitals.
It's still reporting, we don't, they don't give us their revenues.
That's the one that we're saying we would not have an estimate on.
Are you still working on getting that data or you're, you're just not going to get it? Data on how much revenue will you generate for the-
They don't give us that information.
I think they're asking a different question. If we did an audit of potential businesses that we think we should be getting, that's what you're asking. Like, that's two to three million is what y'all say.
That's the businesses that should be paying a fee.
Right, that's what, that's what, that's what we get.
That's what we want, so a potential of two to three million dollar revenue.
Yeah, that's, and that's on our next slide too.
Oh, well, go ahead, around.
Let's, let's, we'll get through this before tomorrow.
So we just want to make sure we're clear too about what we're talking about with regards to business licenses as well. Um, and, and in particular, some opportunities that are missed. Options. These are just options. They're spelled out um that we, that we have, have either discussed or has been discussed with us or has brought, been brought to our attention. Again, this will be a joint conversation. Nonprofit options to address part of the originally addressed question of a fee or tax or, or rather a fee to nonprofit entities. Um, a couple of options that we have explored and looked at with other entities is a letter of agreement for services. It's basically a voluntary letter by those agencies to pay for some type of fee in exchange for the services that they receive as a benefit of being located in the city. Same would be true with a pilot or a payment in lieu of tax with the higher eds, hospitals or medical services being an example area that we would approach. A business improvement district, I think, was also suggested for specifically a higher ed districts. One that staff is particularly focused on or is recommending is regard to a business license, charging a fee to business type activities that currently receive a no, a no-fee business license. It will require ordinance changes. We're not able to estimate what that revenue would be. Do y'all want to go through all of the options or do you want to talk through?
I'd like to add one more option, but you go ahead.
Okay, the next one is the enhancement, enhance enforcements of existing business license ordinances. That's the question, I think, that was just raised in terms of what we think we- Ms. Alons has already estimated approximate two million that we think we could get based on enforcing our existing ordinances using outside firm to assist with those collections. Vendors providing services to non-tax, non-tax entities, for example. That would be some of those out-of-city businesses that are not paying a business license. Uh, would not require any changes to our ordinances, no changes to rates or fees. It's simply enforcing what's already on our books. We already have included it in the proposed nineteen-twenty budget that will be coming forward to you. Um, and we've estimated about two million in revenues from that activity. It will result though in needing to hire or utilize a firm to assist with those services.
Do we need a new ordinance for that or we just can enforce our own?
It's enforcing everything on the books as is. Public safety fee. This would be um a fee that would require an ordinance, would require a public hearing. It would need to be used for new enhanced technology or capital needs is what we've suggested. But it basically would be required to be used for new or enhanced services being offered. We are tying it more to enhanced technology or um, and um, capital needs of public safety, police in particular. This is just an option being discussed in terms of how it would be proposed and a rate. But the charge would be passed on, would be included on all of our water and sewer bills for in-city customers. That's our mech-
You, 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 that, that doesn't, that doesn't move the needle. If, if we're going to look at a, a public fee that, that helps enhance the general fund and over, it has to be done a different way. That five dollar a month, that's-
Sure.
All, all you're, all you're doing is create, what we're doing there is not creating a balance. And that was the purpose of the discussion, is balancing out the costs that are spread across this city that only a portion are paying for. And that doesn't do that. All you're doing is going, the majority of those people are paying already on every aspect.
We have to then get into deeper discussion about that one.
Yes.
Let's, uh, let's, let's, finish going to, yeah, finish going to that.
And then final, the last one that was proposed, the water and sewer transfer. The amount of transfer would be subject pri- to prior year interest earnings and late fees. It would not be from operating revenues, it would be from non-operating revenues. It would not be from operating revenues, it would be from non-operating revenues. Those would be revenues that not part of the, of the actual operations or calculated as part of the debt coverage ratios. I'm looking at Robert for affirmation on that one. Allocation to fu, public safety functions of the general fund. It would be, again, subject to the interest earnings and fund balance and other non-operating fees, like non-operating revenues such as late fees. The FY nineteen twenty rate, if that were to be considered, would be two to three million.
All right, Mr. Budura.
So another option that we, I think I might have mentioned it to a couple of people, it's to do a, do a public safety fee on sporting events, ticketing, that's going on. And, and I understand, you know, the football games that USC or other events that they hire and pay police officers to patrol, but they don't pay us, or pay police officers a fire truck to go and police the crowd after the game. And that's where a lot of the expenses that the police department can utilize or you can use money for. So I think it's important to look at that and see whether we want to implement a one dollar or a two dollar fee per ticket for any sporting events that's going on in the city limits. I think that is going to generate at least two million dollars if we do look at the numbers between football, basketball, baseball, other events that might happen around the city. Once again, it's not policing and directing traffic, it's policing and directing the crowd after the game is over.
Yeah, but they, they, they do both. Well, that's you two, Benedict. Our guys are directing traffic out there. Carolina, maybe not. Carolina, help from the state.
He's saying they pay for that already, they, they pay it.
They pay for that already, but they, they don't pay, they don't reimburse us for anything else after that.
So add that to the list, and this is kind of the broad overview of the different alternatives. Like I said, laying the foundation for, for example, public safety, and the chief has some information that he can share on competitiveness, which we like to do every couple of years anyway. As the capital city, it's, it's very necessary to the state for us to stay competitive, and we know, looking at the Columbia Compass survey results, public safety continues to weigh very high on our citizens. So chief, you want to, with this other side, drop to that?
Sure. Well, I'm, I think Eric has to load them up.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. So, so for competitiveness to be competitive, in my opinion, we need to shoot for a goal of a three to five percent vacancy rate. We're not there. We think to align ourselves with our agencies that we tend to lose people to. We focused on regional agencies, there's about eight different agencies, but for compensa, compensation, we see a gap between three and seven thousand dollars for, for entry level. To address that is about a two point eight million dollar swing in our proposed budget. And that allows us to increase entry level and also address compression across, across the board.
You say two point eight million?
Oh, I thought you were going, I'm sorry. My fault.
Two point eight.
Can you hit that first slide, Missy?
I just, I just briefly mentioned the competitive salaries, the take-home vehicles, I'll explain that a little bit further, and then our, our, our technology. Can you go to the next slide? So this gives you an idea of, of what we describe as our competitive agencies that we compete with for salary in terms of entry level, and then some midpoint on, and three years in, but if you look at our entry levels at thirty-five, five, our, the, the ranges from a three thousand dollar difference, I think with Spartanburg, to a, over seven thousand dollar difference with the City of Lexington. So again, to, to fall within that three to seven thousand dollar range is, is the thirty, the competitive level is thirty-nine, seven. That twelve percent is what allows us to increase the starting salary, but also address compression throughout the, across the board with all the ranks. And, and again, as I stated, that's two point eight million dollars. Next slide. As you know, when we did, a couple of years ago, when we did our step pay and incentivized recruiting specialized units, we also committed to assigning take-home vehicles to people that live within the city limits. We currently are, are short twenty-two vehicles to meet that obligation, and this is a cost that's reflective to bring that up to where we are meeting obligations with that. And last, here is a, kind of a menu of some new and some reoccurring costs that are associated with our technology needs. Obviously, the big one that's, that's out there that we're going through in, in RFP now would be for the direction we go with our, our cameras, but ShotSpotter is, been phenomenal. We're hoping to push something out in just in the next couple of days on, on the results of this ShotSpotter technology. Our laptops in the car all have a shelf life, and the next generations, we're constantly replacing those. We have lots of electronic equipment in the cars. The NICE is a technology that will improve efficiency in our criminal investigations division, that's in our current budget, or our proposed current budget. Obviously, our commitment to in-car cameras, body worn cameras, requires storage, we're still, we are still utilizing our, our own storage and not utilizing cloud storage. And our lab that we reconstituted, we've had to adjust with lab equipment to deal with the, the, some of the evolution in marijuana laws. Right now, we have to do some additional testing that was unanticipated, that's increased our lab costs, and we certainly think there's a great need for rapid DNA.
I don't see my dog sniffing Beagle, I mean, gun sniffing Beagle on there.
That, that's, that's in our canine request for, you'll have a gun sniffing passive dog.
If you had the ShotSpotter, is that a new area for ShotSpotter, but you sort of the four hundred thousand we're paying for the two that we got?
Now, say the-
You have two hundred thousand dollars for ShotSpotter New York. Is that a new, three square miles?
If we do another three square miles, yes. And, and, and then, and it's three twenty-five for the, a, a year for the next two years.
I think what we're seeing here for, for discussion purposes is, is the police department's
one example. You know, we know we have fire, we know we have public works, who all have similar issues to provide this service. And when you look at the massive amount of parcels, the value and all of that, and what we do to maintain and protect them around it, I think that there is some form, if it's, you know, call it a public service fee, call it a, a pilot or whatever, it is the fair way to, to create some balance. Going to water and sewer, I'll be honest, to me is, 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 is not the right thing to do. Number one, you just, you're putting an increase in. So how can you transfer money out if you have an increase and you can't pay down your debt and you can't do other things? Secondly, you're going to the same people who are having to pay for all of this already once. And so the increase to the folks who aren't contributing at some level, don't know what that is. I mean, I think that's what we have to have a discussion. I think it is, is what concerns me, because we have one example of one department that has a huge impact. We have fire, public works, IT, all the things that we need to service and protect, and, you know, I don't, ShotSpotter, I, I think, you know, when you think about what officers would take home cars would do in those areas and keeping those officers here, I mean, I think, I asked the chief earlier today what, you know, how many detections, I think last week you said what, a hundred and something?
In the last, last seven days, we've had sixty-seven alerts and a hundred and seventy-two shots fired, and that's in the six square miles of our city.
I heard six today, this morning, about ten thirty.
That was Andrina practicing.
You wish.
Well, it's, it's-
And she missed.
Yeah, it's five o'clock, so-
Yeah, I got to leave in fifteen minutes or something, but that, I think my point was-
Go for it, yeah, keep, keep it rolling.
I was just going to say it's five o'clock, so we can have this, because we need to hear from Michael as well, so we need to have this discussion and the collective session, so.
Yes.
May I ask quick? Where are we as a part of CPD and, where are we? What's, is there, is there, is there any way, or has there been any conversation about additional code?
Yes, sir, and that's, that's reflected in our proposed budget.
Is it?
Yes, sir.
That's another one, my bad. Let me, gee.
I don't have that in front of me, councilman, but I think it was ten-
Today's the day to ask, may I get answered?
As long as it's a situation.
Let me, let me finish.
We got, we got an aggressive agenda, so you get, you get Ed, the information, Sam, you get the information, Sam, you got, what the last question or statement?
I've got a comment, not a question.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't know who's, I guess.
Yes, ma'am, sorry, sorry.
The, the information is, is good for whoever put it together, and, you know, I think we all have been looking at ways to add to the cost, add to covering the cost of services. And I've always thought that we should do something about the nonprofits, the non-contributing entities. Water and sewer, you know, is something that I, I admit that I kind of understand one approach for doing that, because if you do it, you do it right, the revenues come in, you treat it as a moneymaker, but you cannot do that unless, you know, your system is really earning that kind of money. But you do have an impact, so I'm not, I'm not sure that that's the way to go. But the discussion now, I think, should take us to where we need to be. Everybody participates, everybody pays. That's the quickest way, I think that's the best argument we could use, once we come up with a, a formula or an approach that makes sense. Yeah, so I don't have a problem with it. Sooner the better, too.
So can I make a motion that we go executive session for, there's no way we're going to get all this stuff done in forty minutes, but executive session for two, discussion of employment of employees pursuant to Code thirty-four, four, seventy-eight-two, Van Bocken, One Communication Center, discussion of matters relating to proposed location expansion incentives to encourage location expansion of industries and other businesses, thirty-four, seventy-eight-two, Finley Park, development incentives, receipt of legal advice as matters related to attorney-client privilege, thirty-four, seventy-eight-two, revenue options so the city receptacle requirements, discussions of negotiations instituted proposed contractual arrangements pursuant to thirty-four, seventy-eight-two, Capital City Stadium, discussions of appointment of employee pursuant to thirty-four, seventy-eight-one, municipal court judges, receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege, thirty-four, seventy-eight-two, FTA matters, and discussion of employee, employment of employee, thirty-four, seventy-eight-two, organizational structure. Thank you, Mr. Huang.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Rickman?
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Was it the guy?
Mr. Dowell?
Yes.
The guy who said the-
Mr. Budura?
Aye.
Mr. Vaughn?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Ben?
Aye.
Do you want us to cover some of the other items until you get?
He wants to do a presentation.